Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting of May 14th, 2018. Call the meeting to order and ask that you would all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Thank you very much, and would the Recording Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Here.
Commissioner Lanson? Absent. Commissioner Newman? Absent. Chair Nichols?
Yes. Just to allay any concerns, even though there are only three of us here, there's nothing on the agenda that we can't act upon this evening, so far. With that, we go to requests for continuance of any agenda item?
There have been none this evening, Chair.
Thank you, sir. And next we have public comments. I do not have any public comment cards. If anyone did intend to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight, feel free to drop off a card, otherwise we will move forward. Next, we have the consent calendar. Is this something we need to have the Secretary call in, or do we just act on this one? Sorry?
You can act.
Okay, all right. I guess we can do it just with a motion, if there is a motion. And just was a matter of clarification, I was informed by the Recording Secretary that there's one change has been corrected as far as the name of the Chair of the Planning Commission in the minutes, so those have already been corrected. Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just would like to move for approval of the minutes from the meeting of the Planning Commission on April 23rd, 2018.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, would you please prepare us for a vote? Thank you. We will move into our public hearings. The Recording Secretary, please call our first hearing of the evening.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A, to allow a new restaurant. Case number is SUMJ2017-70609. The applicant is Dave &amp; Buster's of California Inc., and it's located at 145 West Hillcrest Drive, Suite 130.
This evening, our staff presentation will be Senior Planner Pam Leopold. If you care to give us the essence of the report, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair Nichols and members of the Commission. Request this evening is to allow a restaurant use. The restaurant will include live entertainment, the sale and consumption of alcohol, additional signage, extended hours of operation, and interior and exterior modifications. The restaurant will be located in a multi-tenant commercial building. It's formerly Sears. It's still, a portion of the building is still Sears, and it's located adjacent to the Jans Marketplace. In this slide, it's a vicinity map. It shows you Wilbur Road and Hillcrest Drive. The Sears building is located at 145 West Hillcrest Drive, on the north side of Hillcrest and east side of Wilbur Road. This particular area shows the project site, and it's surrounded by commercial development. The Jans Marketplace is located to the north and east. Lincoln Shopping Plaza is located to the south, and that also has Chuck E. Cheese Restaurant. The Bank of America Office Building is located to the west, and residential condominiums are actually located on the northwest corner of Marin and Wilbur. The restaurant is proposed to occupy the east tenant space, or the end tenant space on the west side of the multi-tenant building. This comprises about 40,351 square feet. Planning Commission Authority, the Planning Commission is required to review requests for live entertainment, and the Commission may grant the request if it complies with the general plan, and the uses comply with the laws, regulations, and policies. The use is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. It also conforms with CEQA, and the use is compatible with those uses in the facility. The project's in the C3 Zone, and to allow live entertainment, the project does require a special use permit. In 2014, the existing Sears building was requested to be renovated into multi-tenant spaces in order to accommodate Nordstrom Rack, DSW Shoes, Sears, and Sports Authority. This request was processed administratively, and a uniform sign program was also approved for the building. The live entertainment requests will consist of either a disc jockey and live bands for private events. The Police Department has met with security personnel. The applicant has also provided a draft security plan with policies. Essentially, staff has determined that there's no impacts on neighboring commercial properties, and that since, because the nearest residential property is 1,600 feet away, the police and the fire department also support the project as conditioned. The sale and consumption of alcohol is also one of the requests. This is an accessory use. Typically, this use is processed administratively by staff. Again, the closest residential zone property is 1,600 feet away, and there are nearby restaurants that serve beer, wine, and alcohol. Some of these restaurants are Chuck E. Cheese, which is across the other side of Hillcrest. They also have beer and wine. The Sunset Terrace Restaurant and Lounge, they have full complement of alcohol. The Dude's Brewing Company, also beer and wine. And the two restaurants, the Dude's Brewing Company and the Sunset Terrace Restaurant, are located within the Jans Marketplace. The Police Department has conditioned the last call for alcohol at 1:30 a.m. The request for additional signage, essentially one 11-foot diameter circular-shaped sign will be on the building. This consists of 95.03 square feet. The area is slightly larger for this sign, as allowed by the Uniform Sign Criteria for the multi-tenant building. But staff supports the request due to the high quality of design with the three-dimensional The overall hours of operation essentially are, for the building, or for the entire building, are 9:00 a.m. through 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. In this particular case for the restaurant, they wish to operate from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., 2:00 a.m. daily, and they may not operate during all hours on all days. These hours are compatible with the nearby commercial businesses and similar to the restaurants that are already in the Jans Marketplace. With regard to parking and traffic, the project requires approximately 423 parking spaces. There are 434 spaces in the lower lot adjacent to Hillcrest Drive, 96 spaces in the upper lot, which is more adjacent to Wilbur, and there are 1,353 spaces in the parking structure. The applicant also provided a parking utilization and needs study, which is also in your packet. This exhibit shows the parking spaces. Essentially, this is a lower lot, which will accommodate most of the parking. You have the upper lot, which is along Wilbur, and then the parking garage, which will take care of overflow. The interior and exterior modifications, essentially the applicant has agreed to retain the existing trellis and landscape features as part of the exterior, and the building will be repainted somewhat with previously approved color that we agreed to with the original renovation of Sears. The interior modifications will meet accessible standards per the building code, and the exterior accessibility was already established four years ago in 2014. Current building elevation, this slide shows what the former tenant had for the exterior. And as I said, they're keeping the trellis and the landscape planters on either side. In 2014, the existing Sears was requested to be renovated into multi-tenant spaces, and essentially, this request was processed administratively with the Uniform Sign Program. With regard to environmental review, this project qualifies for a Class 1 involving minor interior and exterior tenant improvements. We're converting a retail space into a restaurant. The project's location is within an established commercial area, and all public facilities and services are available, and the surrounding area is not noise-sensitive. Recommendation from staff is that the Commission approve the project based on the findings and conditions in the model resolution. This concludes staff's review of the project and presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Leopold. Appreciate the report and the review. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Just a couple clarification questions. The proposed hours of operation were essentially 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Just wanted to confirm, though, the applicant has advised they're not operating. They're going to kind of adjust the hours. They're not going to do a 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. every day. It's going to be varied, is that correct?
They have indicated to staff that not every day will be 9:00 to 2:00. Some days will be less.
And then maybe it's more of a question for the applicant, but again, just to confirm the live entertainment, from what the city's understanding is, it's going to be a disc jockey as well as other types of live entertainment, kind of open book on that with what it could be? Or do we have limitations that we're imposing, or?
We do not have limitations, other than noise has to be confined within the tenant space.
Okay, so it's just with regard to the noise, that's our largest concern here? Okay.
With regard to the live bands, those will probably be for special events such as weddings or parties, and held in, usually in the separate rooms assigned to those areas.
Okay. And then, give me just a second to find it. Question for our, regarding the policing and the conditions on that. I just was reading through these. Are these fairly standard conditions that we place on all SUP applications? Or do they seem just slightly varied, maybe a little bit more than what we normally ask for, or?
They're somewhat specialized for this particular applicant. A lot of those conditions are standard for restaurants with alcohol and with live entertainment.
Okay. They did seem a little specialized. That's why I was just, I wanted to follow up with you, because they didn't seem really what we typically see. My rest of my questions are for the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. McMahon, do you have any questions at this point? Okay, I have a few questions. Ms. Leopold, could you help clarify? Notice in the report, there is a distinguishing factor between a logo and a sign as far as the coverage, indicating that a logo can only occupy 20% occupancy, that space that a sign could. Is that intended, that there's a sign and a logo that's smaller, and they're together, or you, someone gets to choose one or the other, but not both? What is the intent behind that?
Typically, a business will have an on-building sign with individual channel letters and a logo, and the logo is limited to 20% of the maximum allowed sign area. The logo can be any color, but it is limited in its size. In this particular case, we have a business where the logo is their signage, and we've tried to accommodate those requests over the years by asking for a little bit higher quality in that sign design. BJ's Brewing Company, or BJ's has a logo for a sign, and I believe Chuck E. Cheese also has a logo for a sign. So we've tried to be flexible in our review of these, but yet ask for a higher quality.
Okay, all right, that helps. Thank you. And just to clarify, the reason this is before the Planning Commission is just because it's in the C3 Zone, is that correct?
Actually, in the C3 Zone, any request for live entertainment requires review by the Planning Commission.
So if they didn't have live entertainment in their request, this would be done administratively?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Going to save this one for the applicant. On the conditions on page, this attachment to page 4 of 11, also page 15 of the report, condition number five, use inauguration, there's an asterisk there, and I wasn't quite sure I could tell why it was there. I didn't see any reference. Is there something in particular about that condition?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that location again?
Condition number five, the title is use inauguration, there's an asterisk after the number five, but I didn't see any definition as to why it was there.
Usually, the asterisk indicates a time constraint. We just try and call that out. Unfortunately, that footnote did not appear under the heading, so that is a time-constraint condition. We just try and make the applicant aware of that.
Very good, okay, thank you. And on the conditions, Police Department Conditions Number 36, Sub-A, reads, "The sale, service, and consumption of alcoholic beverages shall be permitted only between hours of 9:00 a.m. and 1:30 a.m., Monday through Sunday." Is this going to be in conflict with hours of operation 9:00 to 2:00? Because I can only imagine if they, if they sell an alcoholic beverage at 1:30, someone's going to take some period of time to consume it. I'm just wondering if that's like a conflict, or is this standard language?
There's no conflict. On page 5, Condition Number 10 allows for the hours of operation between 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. The police simply want to qualify that the last call for alcohol would have to be at 1:30 a.m.
I understand that, but if they, if they sell a bottle of beer, mug of beer, at 1:30 a.m., someone's not going to consume it within a matter of seconds. It's made, they may take them a while, so it would be after 1:30 to consume it. That's why I'm just wondering if that's a conflict or not.
Not necessarily. I think the intent is to minimize any further sale and consumption after 2:00 a.m.
Okay.
I think typically with police and late-night entertainment, they do a last call. The bartenders would go and say, "This is the last time we're going to serve alcohol. It's at 1:30." And they have basically half an hour to consume that alcohol before they close the doors.
Okay.
So it's that last time, so the bartenders can clean up. They know that the service will be done. That's why it's a little bit different time than the closing time. It's a standard thing for kind of bars and nightclubs type of thing.
Just a little buffer built in?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. What is the maximum capacity of the facility?
As far as occupant load?
Yes, occupant load.
It's, that question is probably best answered by the applicant.
Okay.
We do have, I think, a, I can give you a number, but depending on how the building plan check is reviewed, I think we're looking at possibly 555 seats, or 590 seats. I think we need to ask that question of the applicant.
Okay, so noted. And again, I think I'll reserve the rest of these for the applicant. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, I have one question. On Attachment Number 2, Item 36C, please explain to me what, what this purpose is, is to have a ratio of the sale of alcohol and food? That's something I'm not familiar with.
If I make sure.
Yes, please.
I think one answer is because when you have a type of license from ABC, they look at the different types of licenses based on whether it's strictly going to be more alcohol use versus a restaurant type with food and everything of that nature. And so, that might, that condition there is probably because they're going to say, your license is going to be alcohol and food, and so they want that ratio for that type of license from ABC. I think that's, that's how it's, that's why it's worded that way.
So this is actually more of a restaurant with alcohol than a bar?
Correct. It's not strictly just a bar, so it's the type of license that's going to be issued by ABC, and staff can certainly add to that if they wish.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Pletcher?
From my experience, the city attorney's correct on it. I think, and the applicant can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, they're a Type 47 under the ABC, and if they're running as a restaurant, they're looking to be a bona fide eating place, and that requires, per the state, to be, the state standards, I believe, over 50% of your sales has to be food. So I think, I read this as just an offset of kind of that condition. So just kind of clarification, again, the applicant, if I'm incorrect, it's not a Type 47, can correct me there, but I believe that's probably where this is born from.
That is correct. We just want to make sure that it's primarily a restaurant and not strictly a bar.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I don't see any other Commissioner questions, so we will go to our applicant for presentation. And I have an applicant card from Stephen Jamison. Please correct me if I pronounce that wrong. If you'd please state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I am Stephen Jamison, Solomon Saltzman and Jamison. I am a lawyer for Dave &amp; Buster's, and we are located primarily in Los Angeles, although we have offices in other, in other states and other locations. It's Dave &amp; Buster's great pleasure to be here in Thousand Oaks. We're looking forward to opening up this location. Dave &amp; Buster's has 120 locations open presently across the United States. You've had an opportunity, I'm sure, to take a look at the documents that we provided, which actually provide you the slides from a PowerPoint presentation. We do have it, I think, loaded, if I may, and while that's getting loaded up here on your screen, I also have some written copies for you. If I could give that to you? Might I be able to provide that, or I can walk it up?
I'll read it.
You got it? Okay. Thank you very much. I think there's five copies there. And while that's happening, let me also express our gratitude to Pam Leopold and her entire staff for all of the diligent work and the good work that we've been able to work with her on to get this project in a place where it's presentable to you, and that we've tried to answer all of your anticipated questions. Also to Senior Deputy Alvarez, who we had an opportunity to meet with, both myself and James Broussot, our Director of Security for Dave &amp; Buster's. At its very essence, Dave &amp; Buster's is a restaurant with an ancillary use of alcohol and entertainment. I'm sure that some of you, perhaps all of you, have been to a Dave &amp; Buster's in the past. The demographic for Dave &amp; Buster's is not for young children, although young children certainly can attend. It is generally between 21 and 39 years of age. It's for families. The families that do attend are there to both partake in the food and also for the sports that are on the various screens, as well as the 150 to 200 machines that are available for their entertainment. Dave &amp; Buster's at this location, as in the other 120 locations, has various banquet rooms and smaller spaces where the area can be rented out by people for birthdays, for wedding presentations, for retirement parties, for bar mitzvahs, for quinceañeras, whatever it might happen to be. There's a question about the live entertainment. This is not a business that is primarily for the purpose of entertainment, for selling tickets and live theater and that type of thing. The only reason that we're here for the live entertainment is because of the private parties that are offered and that do happen periodically, and for those private parties, if you happen to have one for your family, and you wanted to bring in someone that was a DJ, or a karaoke, or live entertainment of some sort, whether it be a guitar, a three-piece band, something like that, that we'd be able to make sure that we have the appropriate approvals for that. The location itself is one that is designed for the guest. It's one that's been utilized in many other locations, both in California and across the United States, and it works very well. It provides a very responsible atmosphere, both in security in general and also for the responsible retailing of alcoholic beverages. We do have our entire team, or a portion of our team anyway, here to answer any questions that I might not be able to do. It's been my pleasure to represent Dave &amp; Buster's in many other locations, so there are certainly a number of questions I can answer. There were a couple things that were brought up in your conversation with staff that I did want to address, and, Mr. Chair, I do think that that is an excellent question with regard to the sale, service, and consumption after 1:30. And I know that's not the city's intent, but when it does use the word "consumption", it is, I think, ambiguous, and so, if we may, I would respectfully request that just the word "consumption" you might consider striking, because the time period during which the sales and service can take place is from 9:00 a.m. until 1:30 a.m. We're fine with that condition. But you're right, that if someone at last call at 1:30 does get a bottle of beer, they're going to have to have time to drink it, and that's why it goes until 2:00 o'clock. So sales and service till 1:30 only, consumption to finish up anything until 2:00, we would appreciate. And I know that is the intent, or at least I think it is, of the staff, and also Senior Deputy Alvarez and the police, and so, just to make that clear, we would request that. And then with respect to the overall location and the entertainment that's provided, we can answer any questions that you might have. Dave &amp; Buster's is also very active in Make-A-Wish Foundation nationally. That is the primary charity of choice, although each store, this one included, will have the latitude to be able to get involved, as all Dave &amp; Buster's stores do, with local charities and local good causes that we may not understand yet, but we will, and the operation staff will be able to do that. Dave &amp; Buster's has also joined the Chamber of Commerce in anticipation of operation here in Thousand Oaks, and so we've been able to do that as well. I believe that one recommendation that Senior Deputy Alvarez had... And so we've been able to do that as well. Um, I believe that one recommendation that Senior Deputy Alvarez had and also Ms. Leopold was with regard to security and the cameras that would be both inside and outside. The one that was of particular interest and we had not considered before being suggested to us would be to have additional cameras in the loading dock area on the outside. And so we've added those cameras and we've tried to be responsive to every request that was made. And I think with all of that, um, you have in front of you now the PowerPoint slides that reflect what Dave and Buster's is. And if it's possible, just to bring up that's, that's why I bring up, uh, the paper when I come. So in any case, if I could just direct your attention then real briefly to the first page of tab number two, and it talks about our company, it talks about Dave and Buster's. The company highlights, you'll see that Dave and Buster's has over 15,000 employees. It's been around for 35 years. And there's 140 to 160 employees per store. I actually think that may be more at this point. I think so. Uh, so it's actually in excess of that. And then, and then if you just take it back to about slide or what would be slide number seven, six or seven, and you'll see that in terms of revenue, about 55% comes from the amusements, beverages 15%, food at about 30%. Okay. I could do that. Oh, it's just on that one? Okay. Well, I think you can see it then on the, uh, on the front. Let's see. Zoom in. There we go. Okay. Uh, and as I indicated, it's got about 15,000 employees, 140 to 160 employees per store. Been around for 35 years. If we take it back to number two.
Do we have a portable microphone available for the speaker? Thank you.
Does that work? Is that on? Okay, great. Thank you. So you'll see on this slide, the category defining concept, eat, play, drink, watch. There are 27 slides here. I'm not going to go through all of them. I just have a couple I want to pick out. You'll see in this next slide, the marketplace, the appeal differentiation, and it talks about, uh, Dave and Buster's in relation to Cheesecake Factory, BJ's, Buffalo Wild Wings, Friday's, Olive Garden. I note there is a Chuck E. Cheese that's across the street, just so that you know, that's generally directed at a younger crowd. And that's a different idea than is the Dave and Buster's. Uh, this particular slide talks about the revenue. As I indicated, amusements at about 55% of revenue, food at 30%, beverage at 15%. Uh, that brings to mind the, one of the questions that you had in talking to staff. It is a type 47 license. A type 47 license from the ABC does require that it be a bona fide eating place. Uh, there is actually no requirement for 50% food to beverage in the statute, but there is sometimes in a condition. And here we're well above that. That's not an issue, but just so that you know. Uh, you'll see here on the right-hand side, the guest split is about 64% adults to 36% family, 40% female to 60% male. It's available for various special events, corporate, social events, student, youth groups, team building, travel and tourism, or rent out, the whole thing. One of the, one of the things I'd like to point out to you is that on the off occasion, and it doesn't happen very often, but once in a while it does, where the entire premises might be rented out, that is not something, just so that you know, that's done with regard to any kind of promoter or any kind of a, a dance issue or any of that. It just simply has to be, or has to do with a, uh, a party that is of such a large, uh, number of people that they might need to do that. Sometimes where that happens is, for instance, on a grad night for high school, where it's, where the place can be utilized for that. At no time does Dave and Buster's personnel or operations abdicate its responsibilities under the city code or under the state ABC code or under its obligations for security in any way. It's all Dave and Buster's. And I believe that is really all I wanted to point out to you. There's a lot of information here with respect to how it, how it operates. The PowerPoint slides provide you some pictures about what it will look like. As you can see, it will be a beautiful venue. It will be something that the City of Thousand Oaks and the community itself and the people that, uh, attend can be proud of and that will be happy, uh, that we hope will be happy to go to and to, uh, engage in all of the wonderful activities and the food and beverage that will be available there. We are available for any questions you might have. And if I failed to answer any, uh, questions preemptively, please let me know that and, and we'll go over anything that you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. And just for the commission's edification, we have speaker cards from the team members from Dave and Buster's and also from Mr. Sri Chakravarti with the team that put together the traffic report. So if you have any questions on that.
And these are all the gentlemen that are sitting right here. So they're available for your, for your questions.
So, uh, any questions of Mr. Jamison or of the team at this point? Mr. Pletcher?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. While I have you here and looking through your, um, PowerPoint presentation, can you just run through, I see the four bullet points regarding the house policy and minors. Can you just run through that real quick on, it says minors are not allowed to roam free. So if I'm, I'm just curious. I'm, a group of 16-year-olds walk in the, in the, in Dave and Buster's, I mean, are they allowed, they're allowed to be in there? Or how, how, just walk me through it.
Certainly. What happens is, is they're certainly allowed to be there. And one of the, uh, the benefits and sometimes considered a restriction of a type 47 ABC license is, is that we cannot exclude minors. Uh, type 47 is a bona fide restaurant. That doesn't mean though that, that Dave and Buster's allows anybody that's under 18 to be there without a parent or guardian of some sort. So what that means is, is that if there's a group of 16-year-olds, uh, in your example, that come in, let's say there's, uh, two or three or four or more, they will not be allowed to be present in Dave and Buster's without having a team member, an employee at Dave and Buster's, assigned to monitor what they're doing and where they're going just to make sure that there's no issues, uh, with them. That's how that works. And generally speaking, families obviously come in, they're expected to watch their own kids. When you got a 15, 16, 17-year-old group that comes in, there will be a team member that's assigned, sometimes more than one team member, depending on the size of the group.
Perfect. Um, you know, I lost my place, Mr. Chair. I think that's all for now.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner McMahon, any questions? Mr. Jamison, I had a couple of questions myself here. In our report, it refers to an upper entry area of the exterior tenant space. Can you tell me where that is located?
An upper entry area? What, what part, Mr. Chair?
This is referring to the interior and exterior modifications on page nine, uh, page five of the staff report. Says the west side and upper entry area of the tenant space will be repainted with one of the previously approved colors. So I'm wondering what, where is the upper entry area?
I think I'm going to have to defer. Justin, is that something you can handle?
Well, it says interior and exterior modifications.
Hello, I'm Justin Mack from WD Partners, the architect for Dave and Buster's.
Thank you.
And I'm going to use this screen also. So you can, uh, see on the screen, the, uh, the existing entry is the Sports Authority entry here. It's that, the red portion right there is what we're talking about, um, changing the color of and putting our logo sign on there. That's, that is that upper entry above us.
Okay. And that's being changed to like that beige color?
It's, uh, it would be alabaster, which would be more of a, like a white, yes.
I love the professional terms. Okay. That's, I thought there was some entry door somewhere located elsewhere. That's why it was confusing me. Okay. Okay. So it's just that entry area?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Then I'm looking at the, uh, floor plan. This is attachment four, page 7 of 7, the floor plan. I see where it has the total number of tables of 122 and the total number of seats of 555. I'm curious as to what the maximum occupancy of the facility is.
Uh, yes, I can answer that one. Uh, so according to the building code, we have to figure that out for, uh, kind of, uh, egress capacity and life safety means. So the total, uh, Dave and Buster's space, uh, lists out at 2,281 occupants based upon what the building quote, code requires us to plan for. Uh, of that, uh, 1,348 of that is the arcade space. Uh, but obviously you're not going to have, you know, necessarily that many people and there's not necessarily the plan, but that's what we have to plan for because you have a lot of games.
Yes.
Uh, the bar and restaurant area, uh, has a seating capacity of 786, although we are seating a little bit less than that with our tables and chairs, uh, because that 786 also includes circulation space and employees.
Okay. And that will lead me into my next question. How many exits do you need and where are they located?
Uh, by building code, we're required to have a minimum of four exits because we're in an assembly use, uh, with a single main entry. We also have to use that main entry for 50% of our egressing capacity. So the main front doors, uh, are capable of handling, uh, 50% of the total occupancy load. Um, there are also two existing rear entry stairs that go, because the lower, uh, the rear of the space is actually below grade. Um, and they go up into egress and out. So they go up a, two stairs in the rear and out. Um, and then we have additional doors up front. And then the kitchen comes out near the loading dock area, which is an existing door.
I'm somewhat familiar with the site, but just curious, if someone were to need to exit out one of these exit stairs, where do they end up?
Uh, so the two exit stairs in the back actually end up on the upper area over by Wilbur Road. There's that parking level that's behind the space that would be equate to Sears' kind of their, their floor level.
Rental areas?
Yes, exactly. So there's one in that corner of the building. Then there's one, um, in between, uh, well, actually in the middle of Sears, but it pops out on the, uh, between the upper level area. But it pops out basically at the, uh, parking area.
Okay.
Both of them do.
We typically don't use those exits, so I just was curious as to where they end up.
That is the hope to never use them.
Yes, yes. Okay. And are those stairs used for maintenance and staff only or is it like, are they hardly ever used?
No, those stairs are not intended to be used, um, by anybody because the kitchen and everything has access from the loading dock area.
Okay.
So those stairs would be, uh, solely for emergency-type persons.
Okay. All right. I presume staff will make sure you're all clearly marked and sighted for that.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Pletcher?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, regarding the live entertainment, um, it says in the staff report for private events, I assume the live entertainment would be limited to the special event dining room? Or dining rooms, I should say. Is that correct or?
Not necessarily. It, it could be and many times it probably will be. But there are times when it can be in the sports bar area. There are times when it can be half of the location, things like that.
Okay. So you, I could actually go in for a private event and run out the sports bar area or?
You could.
Okay. Um, and then I asked staff this just for clarification. Does the applicant or do you have an idea of what your operating hours are going to be?
Well, the operating hours, as you indicated, are between 9:00 and 2:00. The reason for that is to have some flexibility depending on what the community wants or needs, uh, once it starts to open. Generally speaking, I think, what would we be looking at, Mr. Glenn?
Excuse me, excuse me. Could you actually speak up to the microphone, please, if you would? Yes. Just state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Uh, James Glenn. I'm the Regional Operations Director for California to Kansas. Uh, it's a small area. But, uh, the only reason why we do the 9:00 AM is because when football season starts, uh, a lot of the guests like to get there before the game starts. So it's usually specifically only during football season will ever open up. And it's usually like 9:30.
I, I was thinking there's some reason you were doing that.
Yeah.
I figured that may be it.
Yeah, college, college football season, a lot of, we get a lot of alumnis that like to come out and, um, we've got a ton of them in California, like Ohio, Michigan, usually not in the same building. Yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that near the USC, UCLA
Yes.
Fans either.
That's, that's my side of the country.
Mr. Glenn, just for the record, could you go ahead and restate what you said earlier about the closing times as well?
Yes. So, um, normally for California, it's, we, we always open at 11:00. That's lunchtime. And then, uh, Monday through Thursday is usually about midnight. And then Fridays, Saturdays will stay open till 2:00. And sometimes that fluctuates. Sometimes we'll reel that back. But, um, Sundays is usually about midnight as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. That's it for now. We'll cycle back. You'll have an additional five minutes once we get through the questioning process.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, our only additional public speaker card, aside from the team, is Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway, come on down, please. And if you would, state your name and city residence for the record.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway. I'm a resident of Newbury Park and an infrequent visitor of D and B. In fact, I'm very disappointed. Where are all the D and B fans in this area? I mean, I know it's a drive. I've gone to the Pasadena one and the one in Hollywood, of course. That's, they are all jam-packed. That's one of the issues that I have with them is that they are just almost too busy. You're talking about, this thing went dead also. You're talking about, uh, age limits. I went in 2006 to Pasadena with my nephew who was visiting from outside the country. He was about six or seven at that time and he has ADD. And we lost him. And it took about 10 minutes to find him. And it was one of the worst things experienced in my life because this was Pasadena. And he was new in the country. He spoke English, but he had ADD. So we found him. Staff, I've had good luck with them, with the staff, even though they are very busy. But the thing about the internet is that if you open it, there's a can of worms there. And I, sometimes it's not fair, but I believe, uh, there has to be some substance to it. And the company is a huge company. It's not a local company. I don't know which state they are in. But, uh, there's complaints, uh, by a large family who happened to be African-American. They, they were mistreated. And the issues can be resolved in the internet too. I mean, that if you have, if you come up with a problem, take care of it. But it looks like they did not take care of some of these issues. And I hope the present management is better. That, uh, they must be doing something right, otherwise they would not be growing and being so popular among, among kids. In fact, I take a slight umbrage to being, uh, I'm a Chuck E. Cheese fan and it's right here. I mean, I was involved, you know, about that sign when they came, got the approval. And some of, some of us don't grow up. And I just love Chuck E. Cheese. And, uh, D and B, this kind of electronics is a little bit above my pay grade because it's for the younger generation X. And they are good at it. And to be open to 2:00 AM is not for this city. It's good for Hollywood Boulevard, but, uh, can create problems. Uh, as you know, we've been able to keep Hooters under bay and not have complaints. But if they have a lot of drinking and partying going on till 2:00 AM, uh, that may bring out the silence. So. the silence, so. Again, I, I hope that the complaints that are on rip-off report, as well as Google, will be addressed, that people are treated with dignity and respect regardless, and everyone is treated the same, and that it will be a pleasant experience for everyone, and we certainly don't want fights, but I didn't really hear about it. If there's another meeting, I would love to do some more research about the local ones, the Pasadena and Hollywood complaints about them, and there's one in Culver City. I haven't been there, but I don't know, I think it is open. I've seen the signs. And I was excited when I learned that D and B was coming over here, because when I moved in this beautiful city in '79, when my kids were growing up, I had to take them to Woodland Hills or then Ventura, because there was no Toys R Us here. And now we, it's unbelievable, we've come to the point where Toys R Us, Toys R Us is leaving. And so they are, they will fill an important void in the marketplace because it is really struggling with the vacancies, and D and B is one of the superstars of the current and future. So I wish them the best of luck, and I just hope that the internet, the people who have complained are just complainers, and that there's no substance to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. I have no further public speaker cards, so I'm going to go to staff at this point. And Deputy Alvarez, I do have a question for you, if you could be prepared for us. Commissioner Pletcher McMahon, questions for staff, or staff, do you have any responses for us?
Essentially, the applicant had suggested that Condition 36A be modified. Staff is amenable to that deletion of the word "consumption," so to revise the condition to the sale and service of alcoholic beverages shall be permitted only between the hours of 9:00 AM and 1:30 AM, Monday through Sunday.
Thank you, thank you. And Deputy, while you're here, I just wanted to concur or get your opinion with what Ms. Leepold said, since that is a police sheriff condition, that that is in fact your position.
It is, it is, Chair Nichols. I had vast discussions with Dave and Buster's. They're more than cooperative and more than forthcoming with every aspect of the security concerns that we had. As far as all the conditions that we listed on there, we're completely comfortable with them, and the modification in terms of consumption, we're 100% good with that.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a follow-up question. I know you and your staff do a great job on due diligence and research, and this is kind of a new venture for us. We don't have too many venues that accommodate over 2,000 people indoors for entertainment and alcohol, and till 2:00 in the morning. You know, we're gradually having to unroll our sidewalks back again at 6:00 or 8:00 or 9:00, and now we're getting till 2:00. So in your efforts to kind of patch all this together and see what the impacts were to your responses, or perhaps the community as a whole, anything come up that was of concern that you'll be keeping your eyes on?
This is going to be a big experiment for our city. This is just about the closest Dave and Buster's to a lot of our outlying areas, especially north and, and west of us. But I feel comfortable in working with Dave and Buster's that any issues that were to come up, we'd be able to address and address them quickly and significantly. I have the phone numbers for all the security agencies that are going to be involved with this. If there's an issue, alls I really have to do is pick up a phone call, and we can get our heads together and make a modification. In terms of some of the challenges that I've seen, I really haven't seen any challenges that Dave and Buster's wasn't able to address. They're, like I said, they're more than forthcoming with us and more than happy to cooperate and deal with any issue that we have. So at this point right now, I'm very, very comfortable having Dave and Buster's come to our town and being able to work with them.
Thank you. And in your investigation, do you find that, because you mentioned that there's quite a region that they might draw from, is there a certain following or certain people that are like Dave and Buster's fanatics that are just immediately going to show up? Is that?
Well, I'm sure I'll be there. I am a Dave and Buster's fan. I have taken my children there. But no, I haven't seen, I really haven't seen any kind of, any kind of problem or issue. Just a big concern for me initially was we are just about the farthest north in our, in our region. I know there's one either coming or just developed in the valley, on the, the north side of the valley there, but this is going to be new for us. We're going to be attracting a lot of people to this area, and quite honestly, that was my biggest concern. And we'll have people from Santa Barbara and Oxnard and Fillmore and Santa Paula coming. So it was a bit of a concern for me, but every, at every avenue, every concern that I had, I was able to address it with Dave and Buster's, and again, they were more than willing to, to increase security if security needs to be increased, to change hours, if hours need to be increased or to be decreased, to change alcohol servings up. They were more than, more than happy and willing to work with us. So in terms of speaking with them, extremely professional, very corporate, and I was very satisfied that all my, all my issues would be addressed.
Fantastic, okay, thank you very much. I agree, this is a new experiment, and we're looking for a successful one.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Any questions for the deputy? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Nichols.
Any questions for staff at this point? Okay, at that, in that case, Mr. Jamison, you have an additional five minutes. If you care to give a summary, wrap up, respond to anything that you heard, if you just, again, if you would, please give your name and city residence for the record.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Stephen Jamison again, Solomon Saltzman and Jamison for Dave and Buster's. I'm only here to say thank you very much. We're looking forward to being in the city of Thousand Oaks. We're looking forward to having a wonderful venue that you can enjoy, and if you have any other questions, we're here for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? I see none, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open to questions, comments, or a motion. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly agree that it is going to be a experiment, a fun experiment at that, because you could go to Dojo Boom and then go to Dave and Buster's, and you have yourself a pretty nice evening. That being said, I will make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution approving the request based on the findings and conditions described in the model resolution, with the one exception of Condition 36A, as stated in the record, and I'll just read it for clarification. The 36A shall read the sale, sales and service of alcoholic beverages shall be permitted only between the hours of 9:00 AM and 1:30 AM, Monday through Sunday. Just as a couple of comments, though, to the applicant, I want to, in addition to making the motion, I want to thank you for a very well-thought-out presentation. You know, this is certainly a prime example of what I would love to see from future applicants. I think you went above and beyond for even the issue that's before us tonight, letting us get to know you, getting to know your company, and getting to know the well-thought-out process that's gotten you here. So I want to thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, I will support the motion. I think it satisfies a lot of needs in our community. I see a lot of millennials who go down to LA because there's nothing to do late at night here in our town, and this will keep the millennium, millennials off the streets, off the freeways, it'll keep them in town, keep their sales tax revenues in town. I like that. And my ears perked up when you talked about college football, college basketball. There have been many times coming home from a UCLA game late at night. We want a snack. There's nothing open but In-N-Out, and, you know, it'd be nice to have something open when you get back home, so I like that also. So I think also bringing in some clientele from neighboring cities, more sales tax for the city, and I think it's a good idea. I think, obviously, it's new, and we'll be a little cautious at first, but I'm going to support the motion. I think it's great.
Thank you. Just a quick question for the recording secretary. Do you need Commissioner Pletcher to push the motion button for us to move forward?
No, I'm just waiting for you to call.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I, too, will support the motion. I think any concerns I did have, Deputy Alvarez was, was able to calm those down a little bit. Again, this is a new adventure for us. I think the, the entertainment realm that we have has been focused around this building and the Civic Arts Plaza. We have a few restaurants that cater to some limited types of entertainment, but not really an entertainment venue, and so I think this will certainly help with that. The Dojo Boom is kind of in that realm as well, the theaters brings it do a new element. Be curious to see what the place is like with 2,200 people in it. That's going to be quite, quite the facility. We'll, we'll be experimenting with that and appreciate the deputy's comments on that, and I appreciate his comments that Dave and Buster's is willing to adjust as needed as we go through the growing pains of this. You know, you know, we have kind of been a, like I said, a sleepy town type of place. My kids have complained for years, there's nothing to do after 6:00 in town, so hopefully this will give them a little something, although they are in that age group now, so they'll probably take a look at that. But I do appreciate the presentation about the, the information that we have here. I think we do have what's necessary, and looking forward to it being an integral part, not only of our community, but certainly the Gen's marketplace, to keep that place up and going, as I know it's been an essential part of our community for many decades. So look forward to bringing it up to the next level, I guess, for the Gen Xers. Okay, would you please prepare us for a vote?
Motion carries 3-0.
Now, this is a public hearing that can be appealed if anyone does care to appeal it. You have 10 days to do so and to bring that appeal to the Community Development Director. All right, will the recording secretary please call the next case?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider item 7B. To retain light standards for Lexus Topo Motors at 3755 Auto Mall Drive, the case number is DPMJ 201670412.
Thank you very much. And this evening, presenting the case, Mr. Steve Kearns, our senior planner. Mr. Kearns, good to see you this evening. If you please share us, share with us your report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Nichols, members of the Planning Commission. As mentioned, a major modification application has been filed seeking to amend a project condition for an underlying development permit to allow rooftop lights to remain on existing parking or inventory storage garage at the Lexus dealership. This item is here before the Planning Commission tonight due to the fact that a project condition explicitly prohibits lighting that is exposed from public vantage point that extends above the parapet. Generally, rooftop lighting requests are acted upon by the Community Development Director, but that's normally for parking structures where the lighting is required by building security ordinances. This process tonight does not determine the processes going forward for future requests. They'll all be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and the process determined, but based on the nature of their requests. This is the project site. As you can see, the building is, this image was taken in 2015, so the building, the site had been prepared for construction, but development had not yet begun. To the north is the Ford dealership, adjacent to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. To the east is Cord Avenue. This area here is the Rusnak Porsche. Immediately adjacent to the west is the Hyundai Subaru dealership, adjacent to Marmon Avenue. And to the south is Auto Mall Drive with the 101 freeway, and then this cross freeway, this pink, this SoCal storage, this is an industrial building, multi-tenant industrial building, and Yoga Works is one of their tenants. And just want to point out to the west further, this is a Rusnak BMW dealership, and then under construction is the Land Rover dealership here. And I mention these two dealerships because they do have approved inventory storage garages with similar conditions restricting lighting. This is the rooftop of the Lexus dealership. The portion with the light bulbs is the inventory storage garage, the rooftop of it. This area is about 35,000 square feet. It has six light standards that are existing. They're, they're sort of centralized to the rooftop. You can see it's about 34 feet from the right side, close to 68 feet from the top of parapet, and then about 80 feet from the southerly parapet. So they're, they're quite a ways away from the extent of the rooftop. This is a planned view of the elevation, demonstrating the light standards on top of the roof. The light standards are 13 feet 9 inches in height, and that's from the base, bottom of the base to the top of the light fixture. They are behind a four-foot-high parapet, so what's exposed is 9 feet 9, and that's that planned view. That's looking straight at it. If you're obviously street level, you'll be looking up at an angle and only be seeing a portion of these light fixtures. This is an image of light standard top of the roof, showing the base of light standard to the top of the fixture is 13 feet 9 inches. This is a broader view showing all six light standards, and the backdrop is the showroom roof for Lexus dealership. Beyond that is the, would be Auto Mall Drive, and this just shows the expanse of the lights and the top of the roof. Now, the rooftop was permitted lighting. There's wall pack units installed along the parapet around the extent of the roof, the perimeter. There's about 30 of these lights, but as you can see in the image, the vehicles are backed right up to these lights. They block the, the light fixture and the light source, so it basically makes them ineffective. This application is not requesting any waiver from a development standard. The maximum building height for the buildings within the C2 Auto Mall zone is 35 feet, and this building is 35 feet. Roof attachments, however, can exceed that maximum height by up to 20 feet. As noted, the light standards exceed that maximum, exceed the maximum height by 9 feet 9 inches. There's no prohibition or municipal code for rooftop lighting, and this building is, just to note, this building is not a parking structure, nor is it used for customer display area. So the building security ordinance do not apply, so the city is not under any obligation to permit rooftop lighting in this situation. This picture is an image looking southeasterly through the site from the corner of Marmon and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It's a Ford dealership in the foreground, and then it shows the, the exposed portion of light standard from that perspective. This is just another perspective from Cord looking southwest through the property, and again, just shows how much the light standards are exposed from that vantage point. This is an image of the lights at night in operation. It's important to note here that these light, this is a picture of lights several months ago before light shields were installed, so now there are light shields, and it does block the light source from this, this vantage point. And I'll discuss that more in a moment. This is looking from Cord, southwesterly through the site. The light in the foreground is not part of the Lexus dealership. That's actually in the rear portion of the display area for the Ford dealership. That's a freestanding parking lot light. The two lights on top of the roof here are the Lexus lights. Since the applicant filed a major modification, through our review process, we asked them to install light shields around the, around the light, the portion of light that were facing public vantage points, which they did. So these light shields are now in place, and they do block the light fixture from various public perspectives. This project was reviewed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. It has been determined that it is exempt as a Class 1 categorical exemption, has a minor alteration to existing structures. As staff evaluated this, this project, and ultimately came up with a recommendation for approval, was based on the fact that the light standards are situated toward the center of the roof and provide limited visibility from very toward the center of the roof and provide limited visibility from various, various vantage points. There, there are a minimal number of lights. There's only six atop of the roof for the entire 35,000 square feet area. The light source is concealed by those shields I showed you a moment ago. There's conditions limiting the operation to the time that the business is open, which is till 8:00 PM. And that the light source is activated by motion sensors only. And because the area is not used by customers only for, only by employees, there's limited use of the rooftop area to activate those lights. This application does not request any deviation from municipal code. And the light intensity based on the photometric plans and staff's site visits is limited to the extent of the roof. So it doesn't spill outward beyond the parapet and doesn't spill upward. And that the, the lighting is actually consistent with the intent of the rooftop light limitations, since the lighting is consistent with the ambient lighting within the area. So based on these factors, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the project based on the findings and conditions contained in the model resolution attached to your staff report. And staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this point? Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, thank you for your report. You just finished by listing all the reasons why you are recommending it. And it doesn't violate any municipal code and all that stuff. So I'm trying to understand why we are considering this and why it wasn't handled administratively.
The Planning Commission is seeing this because it's essentially the first for one of these parking storage units or storage facilities. And the City Council for the Resnick dealership back in 2004 did deny rooftop lighting for that facility. So at this point, we felt it required a higher level of approval or review.
Administratively, or would it be back to us again?
It would depend on the nature of the request. They are allowed lighting on those rooftops, but they're limited to lighting that does not exceed the height of the parapet. If they were looking for an amendment to that condition to allow the lighting, in that case, we would review it and again, on a case by case basis and make a determination on who has the, the authorization or authority to make a decision on that application.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kearns for the presentation. I want to just come back because perhaps I just missed last portion of what you said in your presentation. You were talking about the consistency with the lighting in the area. I don't know if that even refreshes what you were saying. Can you just walk me through the the lights as they stand today are consistent with the area from, that's what I wrote down in my notes. Is that correct? And can you just walk me through that again real quick?
Yeah, but what I was trying to say at least is that the lighting does not exceed the ambient lighting for the area. So it doesn't provide any more nighttime light pollution that you already have out in the auto mall. The auto mall is very illuminated, as you, I'm sure you know, driving by it. It's well lit. So this just is, the lights on the rooftop are drowned out by the existing lights.
So coming back to that, the I forget what page it is of our packet, but the maybe I can find it. It's attachment four, page five. It's the, the grid of lighting and the readings that you got based on the way I'm supposed to read this is essentially these lights with the, as they currently stand today. The light pollution as it reaches towards the end of the parking structure, there really is nothing that spews beyond the parking structure as far as light pollution and what you would see?
Yeah, that's correct. The photometric plan.
Photometric?
Yes.
I'm not a scientist.
The light intensity on the rooftop and it dissipates to essentially zero at the extent of the roof line. So does not go beyond the property line. So, or beyond the parapet. So you will not see any light spilling beyond that. And the way the fixtures are designed, you don't get spillage upward either.
Okay. And in our staff report, you were talking it addressed the history of vehicle storage structures. 2004, the Planning Commission denied a request by the Resnick. July 2004, City Council considered the appeal. Then we had the Lexus and Land Rover dealership. So with, just so I can understand where the city stands on this with, if it's a vehicle storage structure, we typically want to have the lights. We don't need to have these light poles because it's not a public, it's not a public parking lot. It's not somewhere where the public would generally be walking to have the individuals sell cars. Is that correct?
That's correct. Since it's not considered a parking structure for customer use, then it does not fall into the building security ordinances and they're not required by code to have lighting atop of the roof.
So just for consistency sake, with this particular applicant project, we because it was a vehicle storage structure, we placed the initial condition on there that's saying you don't need poles. You can just do the, the sconces along the walls and that's sufficient for cities, our cities sake. Is that correct?
Yes, the, because it's not required for building security, we limited the lighting to lights standards that do not exceed the height of the parapet. So in some cases, they can install ballard type lighting where the light is at the top of the ballard and provide some illumination, but would it be four feet high or so? And then wall sconces, which illuminates the perimeter. But as you noted, in this case, the cars block those, the operation of those.
Okay. And really the basis for why we're doing that is we're really looking to minimize light pollution on that. Is, is that really, is that why we're making these recommendations to applicants?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. So all things considered, even though they don't have to, the applicant doesn't have to install these poles, they could, and it would be fine by city standards. If they wanted to install the poles, get approval, it's fine. If they didn't want to install the, totally up to them. Is that how I'm to understand this?
Well, the project condition for the underlying development permit when the Lexus dealership went through the entitlement process prohibited any sort of light standard that exceeded the parapet height, which is four feet high. And these were installed after that permit was issued. And at this point, the applicant is seeking retention of them. After we evaluated these lights, because they're out there, we could actually see them in operation. We determined that they didn't have a negative impact and we are supporting at this point.
And this is a long time coming. I saw that it was, I mean, I remember this being on our upcoming schedule a few times and suddenly not disappearing from our upcoming schedule. So I assume you've, the city has worked very closely with the applicant in mitigating any light pollution or any other issues that the city would have with that?
Correct. We've worked with the applicant to have, for example, light shields installed and other accommodations, the motion sensors, the photocell, which would activate the lights at night. We've worked with them closely and they've provided everything we've asked them at this point.
And those are largely on page five of our staff report. I think it's lighting at the rooftop and you have A, B, C, D, E, F. Is that a large, is that the exhaustive list or am I missing one?
Yeah, that's the lighting on the rooftop condition. Yet that is the all the agreements that we had came with Lexus.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was 100% on what, what had occurred over the last few years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Kearns learned something new going through this process, that there's a distinct difference between an auto storage facility and a parking structure, although to the naked eye, they looked exactly the same. So is, I presume somewhere in our municipal code, there is a definition as to what one of the other is or is not. Is that correct?
There is a definition of what a parking structure is, and a parking structure in our municipal code is a structure designed to achieve required offset, off-street parking onsite. This is not being used to meet our off-street parking requirements. This is used solely for warehousing of vehicles. So in this case, it didn't have to meet the development standards for a parking structure.
Okay. So I could restate that. An auto storage facility is not defined. A parking structure is defined, and if it doesn't meet the definition of a parking structure, it then defaults to being auto stores facility.
Essentially a big warehouse. Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm fully educated now. Thank you. On page two of the report under history of vehicle storage structures, there is reference made to a similar request for vehicle storage lights. But the paragraph seems to go on that is really a an application for a structure. Was lights ever a point of contention here? Because I don't see any reference to lights as being discussed or approved or not approved. It really was whether the structure was approved and that was denied, but then approved by City Council. So was, was the discussion of lights wrapped up into that? I couldn't tell from the, the report.
Lighting wasn't discussed as part of the Planning Commission decision to deny the parking structure at the time. They determined it was a parking structure and did not meet the development standards for parking structures. They recommended denial and ultimately denied that project. The case was then appealed to City Council and City Council made a determination that it did not meet the the definition of a parking structure. And allowed for the parking, or the parking inventory garage to be constructed without meeting all the parking structure development standards. So the, the lighting wasn't discussed. It was discussed as part of the motion to approve the appeal by City Council. And they essentially stated that the lighting for the site shall not exceed the ambient lighting for the area.
Would that then have been the landmark case that kind of distinguished an auto storage facility?
Oh, yes, that was landmark case.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I didn't see it in the report. Was, was there any consideration given to impacts to the Ventura freeway as a scenic highway?
We did look at the scenic highway element and because it matches, it meets the ambient light levels of the auto mall in that area, there was no impact. So we didn't felt it was in violation of the scenic highways element.
Okay. On page five of the staff report, it has reference of lighting at rooftop and the items A through F. Item B refers to timers being installed so that the lights are on no later than 8:00 PM. However, there's no restriction as to when the lights can be turned on. And being a frequent early morning commuter in the winter hours, there are lots of lights along that stretch of the highway. Could we further restrict that to something like 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM only? So that there's a start and stop time. So there's no confusion that they might or might not be able to turn it on again at midnight till five o'clock the next morning.
We, we can add that into the condition. The, the lights are actually activated by photocells. So when and I'm not sure what time the timer turns on. It could, I we can ask the applicant what time it's set for, but we can definitely add language to the condition restricting or refining that time period.
Okay. All right. We can check with the applicant on that. On page five of five of attachment one, item seven says unauthorized changes. The final sentence refers to unauthorized changes or failure to comply with the conditions of this permit may require future corrective work and result in a city code violation. Was that determined to be a violation in this case? And if so, was there any consequences for that?
This was a violation of a project condition. That's why we're here tonight. The applicant filed the appropriate remedy, which was a major modification to go forward. So no code compliance action is, is in play right now.
So what we're doing here is, is the end result of that?
It is right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. On page seven of attachment two, page 70 in the packet, on item number 33 talks about lighting at the rooftop. And the last sentence is the parking lot lights slash poles shall be removed. I presume by this, this statement that there was a set of plans that showed that there were lights proposed as part of the structure. And that the the direction of the condition was to have those removed. Was there in fact, a set of revised plans submitted that showed the removal?
I, I do not have a set, a set of plans in the file for the original entitlement that showed the removal of those plans, uh, remove those lights, but it would have been removed as part of the building permits in the middle. So at that point, staff would require them to be eliminated from the building plan check set. And if they're included, then would not have approved that plan.
If if that were the case, how would that information get to the building plan checkers that that was supposed to be removed? If it was only conducted at a planning hearing and unless they had that information, that they would have known it needed to be removed?
It's essentially a two-step process. The entitlement review is the architectural review, which is the entitlement that's being considered here tonight of the modification to that entitlement. And the second stage goes into the building permit plan check and the planner is involved in that process as well. And reviews that construction set of drawings just for consistency with the entitlement conditions. And then provide the zone clearance if it does meet it and, or doesn't take action on it if it does not meet it.
Okay. Thank you. I think that concludes my questions for staff. I may have more for the applicant if not repeating myself on that. Nonetheless, I see no more questions for or from the commission. Okay. So with that, I'm going to go to our applicant, Mr. Tom Cohen. Mr. Cohen, if you would please state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Thank you, Chair Nichols. Good evening, everybody. Tom Cohen. Good evening to the other commissioners. I'm here representing the applicant in a longtime business, Lexus Topo Motors, Inc. So first, thank you to city staff, as was referenced in comments and questions to staff. There's a lot of time spent getting this right. There were a lot of discussions back and forth. We wanted to make sure that we were responding. And there were a lot of ideas exchanged. First of all, our goal is to provide a safe working environment for the employees who access the rooftop to locate cars for our customers interested in purchasing certain make, model and color. Our second goal is to ensure we're working in concert with the city when operating our dealership. And to make sure we do so consistent with the city's requirements. And our third goal is to ensure we are operating without impacting our neighbors. And, and we believe that this application before you tonight, we, we have succeeded in satisfying these goals. Now, it's been referenced, we had a hiccup and a misunderstanding when we first built this dealership. And when advised that the lights were installed without permits, we quickly responded by filing the major mod application that's before you. And staff was very clear and it's directed to, to us. And consistent with the city's design limitations, we were to make sure no visible light source occurs resulting in light spillage toward the building perimeter. To accomplish that, a number of measures were undertaken. First, the light poles were placed off the edges to minimize visibility from public locations, including the freeway. Second, we installed shielding and new light fixtures that directed the light downward and away from the edges of the building. And we achieved zeros on the perimeter based on the photometric study included in the staff report, meaning that no light intensity registers beyond that point. And third, the light poles are shorter in height than typically found in commercial centers in the city. Fourth, the luminosity of the light source is low intensity described by our lighting consultant as the least obtrusive outdoor white light. In addition, to reduce the time the lights are on, there will be motion sensors installed so that the lights will only come on when Lexus employees are on the rooftop. so that the lights will only come on when Lexus employees are on the rooftop. Now, we had an almanac timer installed that definitively ensures that the lights are off at 8:00 o'clock each and every day when the dealership closes. In response to your question about the mornings, the dealership opens at 7:00 AM, uh, there are periods of time during our year where it's dark, but you know, it's starting to lighten up. But the only time the lights come on will be when there's a body up on the top of that building, uh, working and looking for cars and, and things of that nature. Just a quick anecdote, I think this is kind of telling. We, we were asked to provide nighttime photographs to show what the lights looked like when on. And we encountered difficulties earlier, I think it was last week, because sunset happens close to the eight PM hour, eight PM hour, and the sky isn't truly dark until almost 9:00 PM. And we lacked the technical expertise to override the almanac timer, which shuts the lights off at 8:00 PM. So we couldn't get the lights, lights back on when the sky, the sky was dark to produce the images that were requested by city staff. You saw some images that, that showed the lighting, but that was lighting that existed without some of the measures that we've implemented since. And during the daylight savings time period, the lights will rarely go on because it's typically light outside at 8:00 PM. Thus, the lights are only going to be on during the Pacific Standard Time for three hours max a night, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM roughly, and only again when the motion sensors are activated. Uh, it's also important to note, and you heard it earlier, that the lights do not create unmitigated glare, but it blends in well with the ambient light of the auto mall. It's, it's much less bright than the other noticeable light sources in the, that are located throughout the auto mall. Uh, we've reviewed staff's proposed conditions of approval, and we find them to be reasonable and acceptable. Uh, we appreciate staff's support of our application, and we request that you accept staff's recommendation and approve our application this evening. And I'm available to respond to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Cohen? Commissioner Pletcher?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for the presentation. So just, just to confirm on the, with vehicle storage structures, really it's only an employee access lot there. From my, kind of understanding from what I'm gathering here, they're going up there to move cars, bring cars down, move cars up, storage. Is there anything else I'm missing?
That, that, it's, that's what it's there for, for vehicle storage. And the employees need to respond to requests from customers. They want to see a car with a certain make, a model, a color. And the employee will arrange for that car to be brought down to the, uh, to the lower levels where the customers are located.
Okay, so it gets brought to the customers. And then, just from my understanding, um, the chair brought this up as an issue, page five subsection B of the lighting at the rooftop. So really, there's a very, very limited time that these lights are even active during the day? I mean, is that correct? I mean, we're really only talking about maybe early in the morning? And then, uh, really towards evening, especially during the winter hours? This isn't something that's on all night. This isn't something that's visible at 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM?
The, the lights are off at 8:00 o'clock. They will not turn on again until, or have the ability to go on at 7:00 AM. And then again, only if there's activity on the rooftop by employees moving, relocating cars.
Okay. That's all for now, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pletcher. Mr. Cohen, I have a couple of questions. Is public access prohibited from this floor of the parking structure, the rooftop?
This is strictly an employee area. It's not intended for public access for customers. I went on the rooftop, Mr. Kearns went on the rooftop to inspect what was going on, but that was strictly for this application. It's not a place for customers to go and peruse vehicles.
So will there be some signage that says, uh, public not permitted?
I, I think that's something we could do, but it's on the...
Fourth level?
It's on the third level of the dealership. There's no reason for a customer to wander in and find their way up to the third, third level. Uh, but we don't, I don't believe we have any signage that, that states that.
I just was curious because you said no customers would be up there, but you know, we all know customers wander, especially if all the, the, your personnel are helping others. They may just, oh, let's go upstairs and see what's up there. I just didn't know if that was an option, but if it was signed or at least they were informed, whether they chose to obey or not is a different issue. But it seemed like if, if they are prohibited, that that should be stated in some way.
We would entertain the thought of, of putting up signage that would address your concern.
Okay, all right. And if you, if you know, if you can, Mr. Cohen, I was questioning the language of condition number thirty-three back from the 2014 hearing. And it states that the parking lot light pole shall be removed. Do you recall if there was a set of plans submitted that showed in fact those lights being removed? That was approved by the city?
I'm not aware, I, I wasn't involved until only mid-last year, so I'm not certain of that fact. I would rely on city staff as to their recall as to whether or not they were removed from the plans.
You, you mentioned that there was a hiccup and a misunderstanding. Could you elaborate, what was the misunderstanding?
Well, the, the lights were installed without permit. That's, that's where the, the misunderstanding came about. So, uh, we were back here in city, city, uh, city hall to discuss how that happened. And to rectify that problem, staff suggested that we file a major mod. We had an option, remove the lights or pursue a planning process, which was presented to us, which we've done. We recognize that at the end of the day, if the, if this body decides that the lights shouldn't belong, then we'll take our chances at the city council if that's what my client's wishes. But, uh, staff felt that there was merit in these, in, in lights going up. They couldn't make that decision on their own. Uh, that speaks to Ms., Commissioner McMahon's comment. Uh, that's why it's being brought to you.
Hmm, yeah, I just was curious because, you know, just to face value, just without anybody explaining anything, as you read through the report, it appears as though it was clearly stated in the hearing, you need to remove the light poles, and yet the building is built and there are the light poles. It's like, where was the disconnect? You know, if, if the plans had been submitted and approved, which showed no lighting structures, they wouldn't have been installed. They, you know, deal with plans on a regular basis, and I know it's pretty much follow the plans. I just was curious if, if there was any going back and determining what causes so we can, at least from our perspective, try and keep it from happening again. I didn't know if that was ever concluded as to what got us to this position.
Right.
I have no further questions, anybody else? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
I do have an additional public speaker card, Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway, if you want to make your way down here, please. And if you could state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. Again, Mr. Chair, disappointed to be the one and only speaker, but this is a very important issue in this, uh, community. And I do want to add things to it. I went to a dinner in Westlake, seems like a dozen years ago. And it, it was in the summer and we were out in the lawn. And I thought a UFO had landed. Because I looked towards the freeway and I see this white glow. And I asked the host, what is that? She said, you don't recognize it? I said, no, ma'am. She said, well, those are the car dealers. Those are their lights, and they are on all, all, all the time. And as one who goes to Orange County quite a bit, or in LA, and I watch the car dealers, my friends at Laden, they just love to keep those lights on all night. And they are the lights, they're the lights that are in the parking lot. They are the lights on the building, and they are searchlights. And the other dealers, they turn them off at, at midnight. But Laden will have them off, on till four, I've seen it, four in the morning when I've come back. And from my own personal experience, I've had to buy some cars, in fact, a Land Rover, from the Land Rover dealership two years ago in 2015. And I had a hard time because they really need this improvement. There was no, absolutely no even illegal parking available at the Land Rover dealership to look at cars. And then the car that I picked up, it, the cars were at the other dealers, which, which used to be the Chevrolet dealership. And, uh, part of the thing is that the car dealers are not that sophisticated about, about paperwork. And I had certain requirements about the cars, and they were not completely sure if they had the car. They said, just go ahead and take a look. And they knew I was not going to scratch the car or take off with the car. So I went, and this is not just here. I worked with a Mercedes dealer in Encino. And you're saying that, that on the rooftop, only employees will be there. I was let on the rooftop because that's where they had the car that I was looking for. And they were not completely sure because it's a fluid business and a lot of people buy a lot of these cars. So they were not sure if the car I was looking for, my client, was available. It was a 460L. And so I went there and, and found the cars by myself. This is during the day in Encino. But it could be in the night also because it's legitimate needs of the business. And so I don't know how you will be able to, you should, you would control that. The thing that I hear about light pollution and these shields is that as if there were homes next door to them. You know, the car, there's no homes, especially the car dealers that are facing the freeway. And that's why, like I told you, when I went to this lady's home in Westlake, the, these, the light from the car, car dealers was just really bad light pollution because you are sitting here in very tranquil... I don't know if some people might like the light, but the, it was, it was not a, not a good thing to have. And the shields will not do anything to that. And if, if the, if the management does not, uh, conducts business at all hours, then at 2:00 in the morning, you will, and a man is there looking at the car for half an hour. There will be lights on there for half an hour. It's, it's, say, Thousand Oaks, the people in Westlake, they take pride in the, in the quiet, bucolic nature, pastoral nature of Westlake Village. That you would not have this thing going on 24/7. It's not a business community. It's a very nice, these are nice residential homes. And there's many streets which are very high up. And the home I went to wasn't really that high up too. There are some homes where they really have much more views. I think my time is almost up, so I'm glad that this thing came before planning commission meeting. A lot of us are really upset that this thing, all these things are being done in the basement without the open transparency of a public meeting. There should be more of that, I hope the chair will try to do that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. I have no further public speaker cards. Staff, do you have any comments or responses to anything spoken by the public, the applicant?
Staff has no additional comment.
Commissioners, any questions of staff? I do have a question. Actually, this is going to be for, for Mr. Cohen as well. So, Mr. Cohen, if you would please return to the, the dice, you have additional five minutes if you care to say anything, but I do have a question for you.
Sure. Uh, Tom Cohen, resident of Thousand Oaks, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, just one point I wanted to make that I didn't make earlier. The, the building of the Lexus dealership is a fully secured building. Uh, the second floor is where administrative, administration takes place. Uh, as I mentioned, the first floor is the showroom, and then the cars are displayed, and that's where sales take place. Third floor is, is, you know, you have to access through an elevator that's kind of off to the side. This is really not an area where customers are going to be wandering off to. So, um, I just wanted you to be aware of how this thing lays out. And that, that, in the event that a, and a customer does wander up, I think they would quickly figure out they're not in the right place and would find their way back. But it's, that, that hasn't occurred. I asked a question of, uh, Mr. O'Brien, who is, works for Topa Motors. And I'm now able to respond to any questions, additional questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, along that same topic, I just was wanting to get your position on if we were to require or request the signage be installed, something that just says no public access on the third floor, whatever that floor is. Would you be opposed to something like that?
No, we would not be opposed.
Okay.
Uh, we'd prefer not to, but we would not be opposed.
Okay. And then also, I noticed you made, I think you, maybe I was wrong who actually did, made reference that the timers are light sensors?
No, there's a timer, and then we, we have yet to install, uh, motion sensors, which trigger the lights going on. When they, it doesn't sense movement, uh, the lights go off. There's more to that, there's detail in your packets that was provided in the cut sheets for that particular product that, that can get a little more detail than I'm providing you.
Okay, and can you just clarify, if you know, do those lights come on at a certain time by the timer? Or is it when the light gets dark enough and the sensor activates the light?
Uh, it's, again, activated by, uh, it'll be activated by movement. Uh, it's a timer that controls whether it's movement or not. The timer will, will cut them off at 8:00 o'clock in the evening. Uh, and then the ability for them to go back on is at 7:00 AM the next day when the dealership opens. So it's really tied into the hours of operation.
I see, okay. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Yes, I just, I think I would like to ask if we could have just that signage stated. Did you have a suggested language for that?
Well, there's, there's certainly many ways, I hope this is on, there's certainly many ways to, uh, address that issue. I think what I propose for a condition at this point, and staff certainly can comment if they wish, but it would read as next in order. Applicant to install a sign at all public access points that lead from ground floor to third floor, prohibiting customers from visiting third floor inventory storage area. Applicant will submit sign text to city planning director before posting.
Mr. Cohen, do you understand that, and would that be acceptable?
Well, what, what I would prefer to do is language that we will work, we will work through what the language will say with staff before we, uh, install anything. I, I know, uh, Mr. Here is trying to, to get more clarity to that, but, uh, I think in terms of location, that's fine. But actually, the verbiage, we would like to have a little more insight and input. And we would prefer to work with city staff to figure that language out. Right here at the dais is a little more challenging.
Are you referring to the language of the condition or the language of the sign?
The language that would go on the sign.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my intent was that you would submit text to staff or the planning director so you guys could work it, work out what the text would be.
Okay.
That was my point is, I didn't know if you would just simply no employees only or some other verbiage that would clarify the point of what planning commissioners are asking for today. So that the condition would be that you would actually, you agree to install the sign at... So that the condition would be that you would actually, you agree to install the sign at all public access points that could lead from the ground floor to the third floor, and that you would submit the signed text to the city planner to discuss, we can have that to discuss, the text before posting.
Let me just...
Sure.
Thank you, okay. Thank you for that. Commissioner Pletcher?
I'm not sure if we're back to the applicant or city staff, but based on the discussion, I have a question for the city attorney. With regard to the proposed sign amendment, I mean, is this, legally speaking, is this really within the scope of what the application is before us tonight? It really is dealing with the rooftop lights, the ordinance, proposed ordinance, proposed resolution, I should say, is written to really deal with the lights? I mean, this seems like it's reaching, just in general standards, into the scope of business that, is it really necessary? We're not dealing with the third floor, we're really dealing with six lights. And it just seems to me almost overreaching a little bit to even think that we need to even get into that conversation because it really, and I think even to Mr. Cohen's point, he spoke with the applicant, walked us through that the third floor, it's, it seems like a different, I haven't had the privilege of going up to the third floor. I viewed the project from the outside, but it seems like quite a process to even get up to the third floor, much less to bring the cars down. So I, I just don't see the real scope and point of this. I want to get clarification or maybe an answer there.
If I may start to answer that question. The nexus between the sign that the city attorney is addressing and this particular item with the lights is the development standards that go with the garage and its type of use. So with it being car storage, has a very different set of development standards from customer display area. So if customers were to access this area on the roof, there's a separate set of development standards that would go into play and a different type of lighting that would be required. So by strictly restricting the lights to fit the type of use for this structure and having signage to make that clear to both employees and customers, is what's best for this particular request. So if the request was something different, the conditions would be different as well as the development standards. So there's definitely a nexus between this particular condition that the city attorney is trying to craft and what the applicant is agreeing to and this particular item.
But again, even though, to me, this seems like everything, they've already been before, you know, city staff, they've already been through this process, much of the scope of the inventory storage garage has already been solved. It's already been dealt with, it's already been considered, properly considered, and to me, again, this seems way out of the scope of what we're here for. I don't know if that warrants any response, but...
Well, you heard Mr. Parker and his comments, and that's really where I was going to go with it. I think there is a nexus. I mean, at this stage, the, the chair made a request as part of this board to have that condition. I think there is a connection between, and it could be related to, that condition for the parking lights because it is something in which we are making specific findings about the use of this area where the cars are stored. And so there is a concern that we don't want to have that changed, that use changed by access by the public to look at cars at that place because that's not what was the purpose of that lighting. And so we're definitely clarifying that, that purpose of the lighting was for this type of use. Again, the condition was requested by the chair, by this board. You can vote on that condition if you want it or do not want it, but there is that nexus for this, and I'm certainly comfortable with that.
Okay. I just wanted really the legal clarification and clarification from staff as to the scope of our inquiry here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Cohen, did you have anything further to add? Otherwise, I don't think we have any more questions for you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thank you, sir. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I am, one more thing here. Yes, I am available for either comments, questions, discussion, or motion. Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out, I don't know if it was addressed in the model resolution, there's a date issue. Says on page one, whereas the planning commission upon giving the required notice did on the 14th day of May 2017. I just want to make sure, make sure we're all aware. Okay, okay.
The sharp eyes of an attorney, thank you.
Well, I'm speaking on behalf of our Commissioner Newman, who's not here and is the eagle eye of the commission, I guess. Well, that being said, I would make a motion that, recommendation that the planning commission find the project is exempt from sequo and approve the request based on the findings and conditions described in the attached model resolution. With regard to the condition on the signage, although I personally find it not necessary and really outside the scope of the application and inquiry, we have asked the applicant if they're fine with it, and they appear to be fine and able to work with city staff as to the scope of what that sign is. So I'd like to also include our discussion on the record regarding the sign, and I don't have the paragraph in front of me, but I think it got read into the record, and I think it's understood by both city staff, the applicant, and the commission before us. And with that being said, I'm making the motion to, really because I think the applicant has shown that although we all make mistakes and in such a large construction project, there undoubtedly is many, many eyes and many, many people working on a project, I think mistakes do happen, but the applicant has shown a willingness to come back to the table and correct the mistakes. I think the applicant has laid out a process that he's gone through for that correction. More so, I do think that we've really shown in the packet before us that there's no additional lighting impact to the scenic, the view shed from the 101 freeway. And through really an extensive process and the conditions placed on those lights, it really shows that the applicants worked exhaustively to mitigate any concerns that city staff has, as well as, I mean, what's clear is that although there have been comments tonight that the, the car dealership area does create a lot of light, this does not add to it. And for that reason, I'm, I'm happy to make the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just wanted to add a couple of things. You know, I've visited the site, and if someone hadn't have told me that those, those standards were up there, again, granted, it was during the day, I would have never known they were up there. It's, you know, very, very hidden, so to speak, and I have not been able to see it during the night, so I will take staff's recommendation that everything's been adjusted appropriately. But I do want to, you know, thank the applicant for bringing this forward, and also for staff, I just want to commend you for reaching what I thought was a reasonable approach to dealing with this. I know, as I mentioned earlier, at face value, it almost looks like someone just said, "Oh, tech with that, I'm going to put the lights up." But I understand, because I have a day job where I do a lot of permit review and plan checking, mistakes happen, and there's not just one set of plans, there's multiple sets of plans, and things can get lost in pickup trucks and everything else, so I know things like that can happen. Whether it did here or not, I don't know. But I appreciate the, the very pragmatic and practical approach taken to resolve this. And I think it will blend with the neighborhood, so to speak, within the car dealership, and I don't think it will be an issue. I will certainly support the motion. So with that, will the recording secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, and again, this is, this case can be appealed to the city council. If someone cares to do so, they need to submit an appeal to the committee development director in writing within the next 10 days. Thank you. Just a quick check, care for a short break? Okay, but we will take a 10-minute recess and come back for our next item. Good evening and welcome back to the May 14th edition, 2018, of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. Would the recording secretary please call department report 98A, please?
Item 88 is hereby called to order for the Downtown Core Master Plan, case number IRCI201770354. The location area is along Thousand Oaks Boulevard between Zeninga Ridge Drive to the west and Caneo School Road to the east.
Thank you very much. Since this is not a public hearing, what we're going to do is actually hear from staff presentation, and then I'm going to go directly to the public for comments, and then we'll have the commissioners and questions at that point. So we'll start off with, I guess, Peter Gilli, our deputy director. Go ahead and get us started, and we'll take it from there. Good to have you with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Pleased to be here to present the Downtown Core Master Plan. As, as the chair mentioned, there's going to be a staff presentation where we're going to talk about how the need for the plan came about and what the plan means. We're then going to hand it over to Matt Ramey of Ramey and Associates, who's our consultant, who is going to present the content of the plan. And then staff's going to have some, have some concluding comments. We'll go to public comment and then to the planning commission Q and A and deliberation. So the first step is the need for the master plan. Internally, as, as an organization, there was, there's been a lot of discussion about the downtown core. There's a specific plan that runs along, along the length of Thousand Oaks Boulevard that was, was prepared in partnership with Toba. There's another specific plan that represents the land on the south side of Thousand Oaks Boulevard in the core area that's owned by the city. And there's, so there's a variety of regulations, there are a variety of ideas about what might be able to be done to make the core a more, a more desirable location to have activities. But there were questions. What, what specifically should, should the city do? There were questions also about how should we treat Thousand Oaks Boulevard itself? What role does the streetscape play in making our, our core more active? And the city owns a property to the west of Dallas Drive, most of which is vacant, and there was, there have been discussions about going out for an RFP to partner with a development firm to have a, a new development on that property. But what should be the use of that? And, and how should that, how should that project tie into other things in the area? And then also a major question about how, how should parking be handled? For the most part, in, along the Boulevard, each site has its own parking, and if, whereas in most downtowns, it's typical to have a park once concept, where you will go to one location, often a parking structure or sometimes a parking lot, and park your car and then walk to multiple places. We don't really have that very much in the core at this point, but should we? And then, and that was a question asked. So there were a number of questions asked, and that led to the identification that we needed to bring in a consultant firm who had more expertise in looking at the downtown core as a whole, not just at, at pieces of it as, as, as staff was, was doing at the time. So that then, I have a visual example of, to walk through where, where we are right now. We are the green dot, we are right there. We, we know we have a community and council goal for an active downtown core. That has come to light through our community survey, it's come, the council has actually made a goal for that, and they assembled an ad hoc, ad hoc committee for the downtown core, made up of Mayor Fox and council member Adam. We are where we are with the way that the area is laid out and built, and we are trying to figure out where should we go? What, the major question, what leads to an active downtown core that will work for Thousand Oaks? There's a lot of, a lot of case studies that one could look at of cities that have taken their downtown core and reactivated it, but what's something that would work for us? But there are a lot of different ideas. And so that's illustrated with the arrows pointing basically in every direction. So the city council hired Ramey and Associates to help guide us. The staff report goes through the RFP process and the interview process. I'm not going to go through that in detail, but if anyone is interested in that, it's, it's described in the report. And Ramey looked at, at the situation, looked at other case studies that might be similar to Thousand Oaks, and figuratively speaking, came up with where we need to go to achieve our goal. And basically, it's to cross the line on the right. So they identified steps on how to get there, that's in the master plan document. But as stated in the report, the master plan doesn't say exactly what path we should follow, just that we should go through each of these steps. So the master plan does not take us in a straight line in any way, shape, or form. It just allows the organization to be aligned in a, in a direction, to get across the line and, and have the active downtown core. The path we end up taking as we go through each step is going to itself involve more outreach, more analysis, and more discussion. And so the master plan shows a number of, of concept plans. Those concept plans are one illustration of how to achieve the objective of getting where we're going. So normally, the planning commission gets a plan and looks at it in great detail and, and figures out exactly how it works and makes a recommendation on that plan. In this case, we're asking you to do something different. We're asking you to focus more on the text, on the guiding principles that are in the document, and just recognize and accept that the concept plans represent one illustration of how to implement those, implement the, the principles in the text. So what could end up happening is we take a path going through each of the four steps and we, we will end up at some point along, along that line, on the right side of the line to achieve the goal, but the master plan's not trying to tell us exactly which point we're going to cross that line. That's going to be in the future. So as stated in the report, in the staff report, please do look at the document as a vision document, look at the concept plans as one example of what the text could look like. There will be opportunities moving forward, if the plan is endorsed, to dig into each of the areas and come up with the actual solution. And the planning commission will have a role in the vast majority of all of those implementation measures. So tonight, it's about whether or not to endorse or recommend that council endorse the vision and the document, and future hearings and outreach will be established to figure out exactly the path that we're going to follow. So with that, I'd like to pass the presentation over to Matt Ramey, who is going to guide us through the process they took and the findings that, that his team made.
Good evening. I'm Matt Ramey with Ramey and Associates. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We're going to... We're gonna spend some time telling you about the process that we went through and about the, the plan itself, the vision plan itself. We're going to start with some background, go into plan objectives, talk about the primary actions, which Peter mentioned are the, are the four steps, the four major initiatives, some supporting actions and implementation, and then the community engagement process that we went through in order to get to this point. I want to say that this, that the effort that, that we went through was really a team effort. I have on my left, Simran Malhotra, who's a principal with Ramey &amp; Associates, and she did a whole lot of the work on the project and will be giving part of the presentation. We also have another really talented staff member who worked on this project, Melissa Johnson, who is from Thousand Oaks, and her, her growing up here gave us a lot of, of real insight into, into the city. We had an architecture firm, John Kaliski Architects, an economics firm, MR&amp;E, and then a transportation firm, Nelson Nygaard. So, we had a lot of different expertise, a lot of ideas. We worked very closely with this great staff to, to come up with what we have today. So, the process that we went through started in, in the early fall with kind of scoping and figuring out the project. We then went into an existing conditions phase of the work and looked at, and talked to a variety of stakeholders, including property owners, local businesses, some residents. We then, from there, developed, created the development framework in a multi-day design charrette that happened here, where we had a lot of interaction with staff. We then created the planned concepts and the approach, and took those concepts, which was in the, the early spring, winter and early spring, and we took that to, out to the community and got a lot of feedback. And we'll talk about what the, the engagement was later on in the presentation. We then created the, the draft of the master plan that you have before you. We're at step seven now with city approval, and then after this, sort of hopefully immediately after, there will be the, the early implementation actions. Let me go into, to background, the next slide. This image shows the plan area. We are sitting right in the middle of the plan area, the city hall and Civic Arts Plaza. The study area is about sixty-five acres and goes from the 101 freeway to the parcels fronting Thousand Oaks Boulevard, from Canejo School Road all the way to Herb's Road. The area has quite a large number of assets, fixed assets, fixed features, that are something that we can really build. We noticed right away, we could build a downtown core off of. The, the city hall and Civic Arts Plaza, you know, where we are now is, is an incredible resource. It brings people here. There's entertainment, which is a very hard thing to get in a downtown core. There's a large parking facility, a public parking facility. There is the lakes, some retail there and restaurants. There's the Gardens of the World. There's Mastro's, and there's lots of other retail shops, including the, the new mixed-use project that's going in at the former Lupe site. As part of our process, we, we conducted a market study. So, it wasn't just ideas that we had, there was actually a lot of research that went in behind this. The market study was done by MR&amp;E, and some of the results are here. I won't go through all of them, but essentially, there are very attractive demographics for creating a downtown core. There's a relatively strong retail market. There's a significant consumer base, not just in Thousand Oaks, but in the area surrounding the whole Canejo Valley. And there's, the demand for office space is less robust, but there is still some demand for office space, and as everywhere in the, in the entire region, there is a demand for, for residential. Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which cuts right through the study area, is a hundred feet wide and four lanes of traffic with left turns at intersections. There's on-street parking, although in most places, the on-street parking isn't used. There are ten-foot sidewalks and raised medians. Traffic volumes are twenty to twenty-four thousand cars a day. Most of those are hap, most of the cars are happening and going through the area at two set times, with the rest of it, the rest of the time, not much traffic. It is not the most pedestrian-friendly environment to, to walk on or to cross. One of the interesting things here about the lane widths is that the, some of the lane widths are actually wider than on the 101 freeway. So, if you wonder why people drive so fast sometimes, it's because the lanes are very wide here. We conducted some stakeholder interviews to ask what people wanted in a downtown core, and this, some of the, the comments that they made are here. People wanted the area to embody the sacred qualities of Thousand Oaks. People wanted a clearly defined core. They wanted there to be retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses. Outdoor civic places have a diversity of uses, to be pedestrian-friendly, to be able to attract a whole, a whole variety of, of folks at all, from all different ages, and to improve Thousand Oaks Boulevard. As Peter mentioned, we, we spent some time looking at, at different downtowns and different, to, to learn what we could from those different areas. The four we looked at were the Pasadena Playhouse District, Old Town Monrovia, Downtown Mountain View in Northern California, and then El Paso in Palm Desert. And as you see here, the red dotted outline is our, our area, and we overlaid it in scale with the other areas. Good, next slide. We, we, we researched them, we, we visited them, and what we found, a couple of things that we found from this are, one is that sidewalks, wide sidewalks are really critical to a downtown. Ten feet isn't wide enough. The street-related open space is really critical. That's where a lot of the vibrancy happens. Landscaping and amenities, street landscaping and amenities are critical. There's, there was varying in the, in the areas, there was varying massing of buildings in height, anywhere between two and five stories. Signage, wayfinding, and public art were critical, and then all of these areas had regular events and programming to draw people to the area. This led us to the question, and working with the Downtown Committee, of what makes a downtown? And you see a diagram here on the right side. Essentially, for a downtown, a downtown core, you have residents who come into the, who live in the area, employees who work there, and then visitors who come in. This pyramid doesn't represent the amount, but kind of what you want building up is the most important features of a downtown. The first is events and culture. The next is cafes and bars, followed by full-service food and beverage, and then retail. A lot of times, people think that retail is what you want in a downtown, but this diagram shows it's actually a little bit different. And so, the more time people spend, and the more variety of activities, the more time people spend, and the more time people spend, the more money they spend there, and the more money they spend, the more time they spend there, and the more of an active place it is. So, that's what we're trying to get to. And to do that, you need a diversity of uses. It needs to be walkable. It needs to be easy to get to. It has to have a unique identity, and it has to be able to draw people in and allow people to spend time there and have active public spaces. So, the vision for the downtown developed through the process is to make the downtown a unique destination. And this is, this is the vision for the downtown core of Thousand Oaks, to create a diverse mix of uses, to focus activity on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We did have some conversations about where the activity should be focused, and pretty unanimously, people thought it should be on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. We want to take advantages of the strengths here, the theater, the parking, the city-owned property. We want to make sure that it's a, a comfortable environment for pedestrians. We want to be able to attract people of all ages. We want to make, make the downtown the place to go to. This is really important, and came up many times, is people want to be able to have a place to go in Thousand Oaks that they just can go and hang out and run into their, their friends and neighbors and meet new people, and, and go on a date with a spouse, or hang out with their kids. There was also a desire to maintain the general traffic capacity along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and to make sure that there was sufficient and convenient parking. This diagram on the right represents the overall design framework and the, the four pieces, which we'll talk about in a minute. Essentially, the, the main elements here are in yellow, a redesigned Thousand Oaks Boulevard, rethinking about Civic Arts Plaza, rethinking about how the town square, creating a town square at the front of the plaza, and how that interacts with the Civic Arts Plaza and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The west-side parcel, which is in red, that, that Peter mentioned is a critical piece. The blue that you see here is essentially the, the continuation of the specific plan that's currently on the books now. And then we have the lakes, the lakes parking lot. The two stars that you see are gateway features or entryway features to announce arrival into the area. As we were doing this, we realized that there were four primary actions that needed to happen in order for the downtown to be successful. The first is to redesign the Civic Arts Plaza frontage to be more active and connected. The second is to expand arts, cultural, cultural entertainment and entertainment programming. The third is to create a retail and entertainment destination on the city-owned west-side parcel. And the fourth is to improve walkability and the pedestrian environment along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. There were, yeah, thanks, yeah, thanks. There were a number of, there are a number of supporting actions that could be taken in order to support creating the vision, but unlike the critical actions, the primary actions, they're not as important to do. If they happen, that's great, and if they happen, they don't happen, you can still have a great downtown core. So, one is to create additional district parking to support the retail and events. Two is to build supporting uses on the lakes parking lot. Three is to add complementary uses along the Boulevard, both internal to and external to the downtown core. This includes retail, mixed-use, residential, and institutional uses. And the fourth is to add a greater diversity of cultural activities and spaces in and around the downtown. I'm next, going to turn it over to Simran, who's going to talk about the four primary actions.
Thank you, Matt, and good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having us. So, the four primary actions the plan has identified, starting with redesigning the Civic Arts Plaza frontage to be more active and connected, and that's linked with creating a town square at Civic Arts Plaza. So, the major elements of that redesign include using the space, which today, which today is underutilized and mostly passive lawn space, to be more active, to have it be the location for multiple events during the course of the day, weekends, the month, and the, and the year. Another aspect of redesigning or, and creating a town square at the plaza is to better connect the city hall, the Civic Arts Plaza itself, with Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Today, when you're up at the theater-level plaza, you can, you can see the mountains, and the views are wonderful, but you barely notice that you are, that Thousand Oaks Boulevard is right there. There's no way to see it, and there's also no way to access it from the plaza level. So, one of the important, one of the recommendations of the plan is to study how to connect both physically and visually, the plaza level to the street and to the proposed town square. Another element of here is to use the front space, the frontage space, for flexible performance and as a place for active public, public events. And that, and to allow for activity at, at times to continue on Thousand Oaks Boulevard if an event is large enough. So, for example, you would begin to, you could potentially temporarily close off Thousand Oaks Boulevard for, for a few hours on a weekend if you were having a large enough event. The space in front of Civic Arts Plaza also could contain water elements that would attract kids, have more public art, have event space, gathering places, and while still maintaining the mature trees, as well as areas for quiet repose and, and respite. This is an example, as Peter mentioned earlier, this is just one way the frontage of, the town square could be designed. And so, you could have a space in front of city hall, which would be paved, which would be flexible enough to host events. There could be an amphitheater on the, which is shown on the right side in a burned area, which could host smaller, more informal events, which are at a different scale than what happens inside the Cavalier Theater. You would have green spaces, you would have, you could have a pavilion for outdoor art and, and water features. Along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, you would, you would want, you would, you could have continuation of the paving all the way across to the north side, so that the entire space can be perceived as one large event space for, for major events. There are some visual examples of what the space could look like. These are obviously not what, these are examples from other communities, but we wanted to give a sampling of how those spaces could be used, both for activities as well as for, as well, as well as for events. Some water features and kiosks and gathering spaces that would, that could be either permanent or temporary, and could be the site for, could be the area where a variety of events could happen. And that brings us to the second primary action that, that the master plan identifies. It is to expand arts and cultural and entertainment programming in downtown. There's already a lot of events that happen at the Cavalier Theater and in, and in city, city hall in general, but the idea is to make, make, and have so many events and activities here that on, on any particular weekend, when people say, hey, they hear about an event, they think, this is where it is. It's in the downtown core, it's in town square. So, downtown becomes the premier meeting and event space for the region, and also a gathering place for the whole community. We could have weekly events, such as farmer's markets, you could have monthly events, such as art shows, movie night, farm, as well as monthly events, excuse me, monthly events, movie nights, Friday forums, et cetera. You could have food truck nights, art festivals, music performances, as well as swap meets. So, there's a whole variety of events that could happen here, and it becomes a way of making this the destination for, for the community as well as the region. The third primary action that the master plan identifies is to create a retail, entertainment, and restaurant destination on the city's west-side parcel. And the city owns about three acres immediately to the west of Dallas Drive, and it's shown in the blue in the bottom-left drawing. The idea is to create a custom-built entertainment restaurant and retail destination along a passeo. One important element that, that we need to, that I, Matt mentioned earlier, was there's an existing drainage easement which runs through the south side of Thousand Oaks Boulevard all the way from, through the length of downtown. The easement, there's an underground drainage channel, and the easement is on the surface, but it's a no-build area, and it's about thirty feet wide. So, the, the master plan leverages that, or takes advantage of that, that feature, and organizes both buildings and open space around that passeo, and within the west-side parcel, that becomes a, that becomes an organizing feature around which buildings can be placed. The west-side parcel would then have, could have a mix of uses, wine bars, beer gardens, retail, food, restaurants, specialty food stores, as well as entertainment uses, like a comedy club, or, or an arts venue. This is another example, it's a conceptual plan of what could happen on the west-side parcel. To orient you, Thousand Oaks Boulevard is on, on the north. You have, you have two-sided ground-floor retail use along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It's about two floors high. The passeo runs through the center of, center of the parcel, with retail on the south side as well. There's a potential for a boutique hotel to the south of that, and a parking structure which is, which is buried into the hill. There's topography here in the sense that the Thousand Oaks Boulevard is twenty feet lower than than where Dallas Drive enters into the parking, the parking structure at the north, excuse me, enters the parking structure as Peter's pointing to. So, the, so this section illustrates, illustrates that a little bit better. You can see Thousand Oaks Boulevard over to the left with the retail space and then the passeo which is in the center, and then additional retail with the hotel behind that which is organizing feature, and parking buried into the slope there. And on the far right, you can see the, where the current Civic Arts Plaza parking structure is. To go back to this image for a second, the master plan also proposes a new street over on the west end which connects down to Zuniga Ridge, Zuniga Ridge Drive to the existing cul-de-sac. What this street would do is provide a safety valve and an alternate route to Dallas Drive as the primary access to this property. Right now, as you all know, if you are at an event at the Cavali Theater, the traffic is, especially at the end of a performance or even the start of it, the traffic can be pretty impacted. What this would do is allow a second way of entrance into the area and this parking, to access both the parking for this property as well as allow an alternate route for exiting, exiting the area. This parking structure could also be the location for providing additional district parking more, and Matt will talk about that a little bit more in the, later in the presentation. The final primary action is to reconsider and reconceptualize what Thousand Oaks Boulevard does or is. Today, as mentioned earlier, it's a four-lane road with fairly high speeds, and the goal here is to widen the sidewalks from 10 feet to 16 feet with, to provide additional space for both pedestrian amenities as well as, as more space for pedestrians to actually be there, while at the same time maintaining the, maintaining four lanes of traffic and not impact the traffic function of the street. Parking is maintained, on-street parking is maintained, and that serves two purposes. One, it adds to the parking supply in the area, but secondly, it also provides a psychological barrier and a feeling of safety for pedestrians who are on the sidewalk. Bicycle connections are through sharrows which are on the outer lanes in both directions, and these are where bikes share those particular lanes with, with traffic, and those tie in with the citywide bicycle network. In the future, when there's more demand for bicycles, the plan can consider re-providing dedicated bike lanes at that time. The extra space is partly coming from the removal of the central median which exists in parts of this section of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and instead of that, there's a, there are left-turn pockets or two-weight turn lane in certain portions of the Boulevard. And finally, there's gateway signage at the two ends to distinguish this, this segment of Thousand Oaks Boulevard from the rest of the three-mile corridor. These are some examples of what kind of amenities we would like to see, what the plan is recommending for the area. So, pedestrian-scale lights which are in addition to the vehicular-scale lights that already exist, larger street trees which are, which provide shade as well as some seasonal color, street furniture which include benches, trashcans, bike racks, and various identity-giving elements, signage, wayfinding, banners, public art, as well as monument entry signs that distinguish this, distinguish downtown from the rest of the Boulevard. With that, I'll turn this back over to Matt.
Thank you, Simran. I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about the supporting actions. As I mentioned, we identified four supporting actions. They're listed here, I'll go through each one of them. The first is to create district parking. The idea is that when someone comes to the downtown core, they park once and then can walk to all of the destinations. It's a little bit of a different model than what you would typically find or what you would find in, along a typical suburban arterial corridor where each property has their own parking. The idea is to pool the parking and then have everyone be able to park in those locations around the downtown core and then just walk to their destinations. So, it's a park-once philosophy. There are some potential parking locations that we've identified, including the cap parking structure in the West Side parcel that Simran mentioned, but there are, but this would need to be worked out in terms of the actual numbers. There would probably be some sort of in-loo fee program where new development could come in, pay a fee, and that would allow them to access this parking for their users. The second is the Lakes parking lot. So, there is clearly a large parking lot behind the Lakes. It is somewhat used as reserved parking, district parking, because people park there and then walk to other destinations, sometimes the theater. You know, if there is replacement parking for what's there, there are a variety of other uses that could happen that would, that could really support the concept of what's going on in the downtown core. This could include a chain hotel, a daytime use such as office space or an incubator or an institutional use, potentially residential with ground-floor retail, although its proximity to the freeway creates some issues there. And the area could also be a district parking resource. You know, we felt like the vision of the plan can go forward without anything happening on the Lakes, which is why it was an additional action and not, it's a supporting action and not one of the critical actions. The downtown core could also be supported by new development happening along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, both within this study area as well as outside in the area covered by the Thousand Oaks Boulevard-specific plan. The idea is to incentivize street-level retail along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This really would help create that vibrant place that we heard people wanted. It would probably need to be done through complementary uses on the upper levels such as office, residential, or institutional, which is needed based on sort of the economics in order to get that ground-floor retail in a more active environment. One of the, the specific plan, it's not really proposing any major changes, just minor changes in order to help meet the vision of the plan. The last is to identify and promote additional cultural activities and spaces, not just on the city's property, the West Side parcel and the Civic Arts Plaza, but throughout the whole core area. Entertainment, destination, retail were things that we heard quite a bit in the stakeholder interviews, and that, that having additional spaces for these uses throughout the area could be, could be a real benefit. You know, it's, you have Gardens of the World here, which is an absolutely beautiful place, but, but it could be integrated a little bit better with the vision of a downtown core. So, that's one option of creating these public spaces. For implementation, the three major sort of action items here. So, you know, one is that as we think about what happens with the plan, that the four items, the four critical items that we mentioned before were identified because they are things that the city can control. And that's actually really an important piece that a lot of times when we, Simran and I have been working on downtown core plans throughout the state for the last 20 years, and a lot of times the city is sort of hoping just for private development to step up and do something. And what we actually have here is really an opportunity that the city controls many of the pieces that are needed in order to create this downtown core and really spark a place, spark more vibrancy here. So, there's the Civic Arts Plaza, the City Hall, the West Side parcel as we're calling it, as well as Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and those were the four critical pieces. So, the city really plays an important role in this with its own investments in things that it can control. There are, of course, supporting activities that can be implemented by the private sector, and those are more supporting of what's happening with the exception of a private development on the West Side parcel that meets the vision of the city because the city owns that property at this point. So, there are a series of steps that we identified that we have in the, in the master plan. These are some of the, what we think are some of the critical first items to happen, including hiring an architect and design team for the Civic Arts Plaza, Civic Arts Plaza building, and then the plaza redesign to doing, creating an RFP for Thousand Oaks, for the West Side parcel, redesigning Thousand Oaks Boulevard, looking at partnerships, new partnerships with stakeholders for things like events and activities, looking at the, any modifications to the specific plan that would be needed, hiring a consultant to do branding and identity program, and then expanding cultural arts and activities and events. As we said, we went out and spent quite a bit of time over the last few months doing community engagement and talking to the community about what they thought about these ideas. We created an online survey, and we had almost 700 respondents to that survey. We did pop-up workshops at the Farmers Market, Thousand Oaks Library, and the CLU Scandinavian Festival, and you can see we had, you know, hundreds of people visiting and talking to us about their ideas. We did three focus groups, one with seniors, one with teens, and one with working professionals. And then we had an open house a couple weeks ago here in this room to review those results. I'm gonna, we got overwhelmingly positive feedback on the ideas here, and these are the results of the survey. And the dark green are questions where people strongly agreed with the direction that we were going and that the master plan has, and the light green is somewhat agree. The red is somewhat disagree or strongly disagree, and the gray is neutral. I'm going to go through just a couple of these quickly, but I think the main, one of the main points to make here is that the majority, more than 60%, on every single question that we asked about the master plan was either somewhat agree or strongly agree, with a lot more on strongly agree. The demographics, there were, of the people who took the survey, 21% were 65 and older, 44% were between 45 and 64. Just about everyone either lived or both lived and worked in the city. There were very few who stopped by who didn't live in the city at all, some who just worked. And then the, the, almost half of the people who took the survey have lived in the city for 20-plus years. So, we broke down the information by respondents. So, let me go through just really quickly a couple of the responses that you see. So, there's a question about whether people agree that Thousand Oaks needs a downtown like the one described in the master plan, and 69% strongly agree or somewhat agree. The, there's a question about whether the downtown should provide a more attractive and comfortable pedestrian, environment for pedestrians. 77% were in the green. When asked what, whether they agreed with the vision for the town square at the Civic Arts Plaza, 2/3, and the vision for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, 64% strongly agree or somewhat agree. And then the vision for the West Side area, 65% strongly agreed or somewhat agreed with that. I want to, I'm going to turn it over to Peter here, but you know, I think the parting sort of thought is that here is that there's really a tremendous opportunity that the city has here to do something that, from what we understand, you all have been talking about, the city's been talking about for many years, which is to build a downtown core here. We saw our role as coming in and organizing the pieces and sort of starting, starting in a direction, and we hope that we've done that, that we've done that with the plan. We think this is a really exciting project. The pieces are in place to really be able to do something because the city controls so much. Without any, turn it over to Peter.
Thank you, Matt and Simran. Just in conclusion, staff is recommending that, the commission recommend that the council endorse the plan. As noted in the, in the written report, council did see the four main actions in March and was supportive of those main actions in general and gave the green light to start the public outreach. Also, the, if the plan is endorsed, then the Planning Commission will take, will have a major role in the implementation. Any physical changes to the Civic Arts Plaza, we'll have to have a review by the Planning Commission and a recommendation onto council. Any development proposal on the West Side property will come to the Planning Commission as all development projects do, with a recommendation onto council. And any changes to specific plans, whether it's the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan or the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, will, will come to the Planning Commission. So, that's the modifications to the streetscape, street section, any potential changes to development regulations that might be proposed to respond to the master plan. All of these elements come to the Planning Commission for review. From, from staff's perspective, the only major item that would not come to Planning Commission would be the event programming, which is something that would likely not have a public hearing at all. It would be an effort of our staff and partnering with the local business community and other community groups. But everything else, all of the, all of the changes that would, would, would be studied further would come to the Planning Commission for review. So, with that, staff recommends endorsement and is available for any questions after the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Gilly and the RME team for their presentation, and I do want to go to the public comments. I have three speaker cards and I have six statement cards, so if you meant to speak and just wrote a statement card by mistake, let me know, just pass it on. I have Sean Maradian first, followed by Linda Coburn, and third, Miriam Lieberman. So, if you would please come to the podium. Mr. Maradian, state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Sean Maradian. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm also here this evening on behalf of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, which I'm the president of. I just want to take an opportunity to thank staff and the RME team for a wonderful job bringing forward this visionary document. We, with the association, have been working with city staff and this team for nearly a year, even before the RME team was selected, to try to come up with a comprehensive plan to implement and bring this sense of place to our core area. I think they've really captured that in their governing document. I recognize that it is somewhat visionary and that there's action plans, and the association does look forward to working with the Planning Commission, staff, and council to implement each phase of that. We know that the details are going to be critical, but the overall plan we do support, and we thank everybody for their hard work, and we're available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maradian. Next, we have Linda Coburn. Okay, she is not here. Okay, thank you. And Miriam Lieberman. Yeah, if you'd please come. By the way, thank you all for spending the night with us. I know you could be doing other things, and obviously you have enough interest and passion to be here, appreciate that. If you could please state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Oh, here?
Just over to your left, right there, yes.
Miriam Lieberman. I've lived in the Conejo Valley since 1981. I'm a physician. I've been practicing in Westlake for 36 years, and next I plan to volunteer for the Conejo Free Clinic, starting in about a month. I started using an electric bike about three years ago, and I commute to work on most of the days from Newberry Park through Petrero to Westlake, which initially was pretty harrowing. I pretty much, since I've started riding the bike, what now- I pretty much, since I've started riding the bike, what naturally happens is you slow down and begin to notice and appreciate the community a lot more personally. You can smell the flowers, you can see, you can see stores, stores and businesses that, despite living here for so long, I actually have never seen before because, or in riding a car, just kind of buzz through everything. Ironically, most of the places where I frequent, you know, personally, are places that are more pleasantly accessible either by car or bike. And ironically, I, I try to avoid the Thousand Oaks corridor as much as possible because it's pretty unattractive, the traffic is uncomfortable, and also because of the parked cars and the congestion, you, you really, it's hard to see the storefronts and businesses. I did actually have a wedding ceremony in Gardens of the World, and I've gone to the Pacific Arts Plaza, but aside from just those instances, I try to avoid that area because it's, it's just busy and unattractive. I've, you know, I've looked at these plans, and it's, it seems really exciting because, you know, who wouldn't want to have a downtown area that's attractive for its citizens? I mean, I'm going either to Santa Barbara or, or to Westlake, or I've lived in Agora. I mean, Thousand Oaks is the place where, despite living here, I don't use. So this looks like, you know, a really great future. The main reason I came here today is because where I can't slow down and I can't go by electric bike, I, I really avoid. And so the, you know, the share-o concept, especially on a busy TO Boulevard, is, is actually, we try to avoid it, except when there's no traffic. So looking, looking at the current plan and relegating bike traffic to share-oes is, you know, not reasonable. I belong to the Pedego Owners Group. There's many of us that ride on Sundays. I ride to work, and many of us meet up socially, but we avoid areas where we would have to get through with the share-oes. So unless there's, I don't see how it's possible to have a widened sidewalk, which looks really dreamy, you know, to have it wider at 16 feet. I don't see how you can have that in street parking and still have, you know, rapid traffic unless, unless the cars kind of slow down into TO Boulevard. They're not going to be able to really, you know, see or enjoy what's around or be tempted to, to stop. So I guess I'm here to, you know, advocate for safe bike lanes and bike infrastructure through Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It is the main Boulevard of TO, and it would be nice if it would become attractive to pedestrians and citizens that want to enjoy it. I mean, right now, I ride through, you know, Hillcrest instead, which is much farther. Through Petrero, even though it's scary, there's, it's still safer than, people who, other drivers through Petrero tend to be really aware of the bikers, and we seem to get a, I mean, I drive through Petrero and ride my bike through Petrero, and there seems to be pretty good respect for each other, but TO Boulevard is just kind of, you know, really too congested for bikes. So just for a safe bike infrastructure in TO Boulevard, being our main thoroughfare, so we can stop and dine and enjoy. And, well, that's really it. So thank you so much.
Again, thank you for spending the night with us, and I appreciate your comments. I know staff is busy taking notes, and I'm sure they will be happy to contact you, or if you want to contact them for more, more information, so appreciate that, but thank you.
I left my, my email in cell, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for coming down this evening.
Thank you.
That, that would conclude the, two of the three public speaker cards. The third one did not show up, and to leave early. As I mentioned, we do have six statement cards, which I have passed back and forth to the Commissioners. All six were in favor of the endorsement. So with that, I will turn to our Commissioners for questions of staff or comments. Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, Dr. Lieberman did bring up some questions that I already had written down. The first question was, how wide will the passeo be?
The passeo will, the passeo will be a minimum of 30 feet wide. It can vary in and out from there, but 30 feet is the minimum width with, which matches the drainage easement that's been established.
Okay, and I'm on the bat, and I was wondering why you chose not to bring this to the bat, which for the general public is a bicycle advisory team, which the city usually consults about things like this, and so I was curious as to why you did not bring it to the bat.
The city has a number of committees, and because this is not, because the street section that's shown in the master plan is not a final design, it is, it's, it's a recommendation of the consultant team on how to best manage the variety of trade-offs necessary to deal with 100 feet that is there. The, the number of groups that this, this package is, the master plan is going to is limited. It's not going to every one of the committees. If the plan is endorsed, then elements of each implementation measure are going to have it, their own process, their own public outreach, and would likely touch more of the committees of the city, as well as more community groups.
Okay, also, this may be too specific, but I did like the idea of the front steps coming down from the Civic Arts Plaza, but I was concerned about senior citizens or disabled. Is there going to be something to accommodate them?
Yes, yes. Any, any design that's created that creates a connection, then the city is required to have a connection, a mode that is accessible.
Okay, and also, these days, it seems most people, when they go out for the evening to drink, to eat, to have a good time, they take Uber or Lyft. So will there be dedicated drop-off and pickup places for that?
The, even the conceptual plans that have been created have started to build in those type of drop-off areas. As we get into more of the details and the development of the concepts, then those will certainly be looked at. Also, it could be a case where if, if we maintain the on-street parking space, it could be that at certain periods of the day that, that is a dedicated drop-off and pickup location as opposed to just being a parking space. So there's a variety of ways to try to address that.
So what I've been thinking about, because I've been thinking about this ever since I got the packet, is perhaps on the south side, the passeo could have a two-way bike lane, and on the north side, we eliminate the street parking, and we have a bike lane on the north side, and some areas for drop-off and pickup. I think that, as we look forward, we are supposed to be a bicycle-friendly city, and we need to do it now. We don't need to choose to do it sometime in the future because we're already going to be spending a lot of time and a lot of energy and a lot of money on it now. Why would we change it in a few years when we can do it right the first time?
And that, that is something that the ad hoc committee, RAMY's team and staff, looked at very closely. By, by taking the median out, that means everything that happens between the curbs is really just about striping. There's no raised areas moving forward. That makes it so that it is a less costly endeavor to modify the striping in the future. If, if we go through the process of working out the details of the right-of-way, we may end up with bike lanes now. There will be a trade-off of some other element, but at this point, the, the master plan is making this as the recommendation for the, for the, for the near term, and there are alternatives that can include bike lanes.
Okay, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but a serious cyclist will be fine with a share-o. A recreational cyclist, or somebody who wants to come to an activity down there and bring their children on their bikes, they're, they're going to avoid it, and you're narrowing the lanes from what they are. So recreational cyclists will tend to want to be on the right side, not in the middle of the lane, because there's cars on the lane on the inside. But they can't be too far over because you've got parking here, and they're going to get a car door opened up onto them. So, so they're just going to avoid it like Dr. Lieberman does. And what we want is to get people out of their cars and get them there any other way possible, by Uber, by Lyft, by cycle, by bicycle, and why can't we start it out by making them comfortable?
We certainly can, and that, that, that is always an option for the final design. The, in preparing the master plan, there was the trade-offs weighed with the, the need for parking for cars, particularly when the area that we're creating is newer, when it hasn't really established itself as, as, as the place to be. The thought is, once, once some of the areas are set, whether it's tenants or spaces or the town square, once the draw is created, then we can look at possibly changing, maybe not having parking on one side of the street and having the bike lane, or a variety of things. But just because that was the thought that led to the proposal in the master plan does not mean that that will be the end result of the street improvements that come out of the detailed design. More input from the bicycle community is welcome, and we want to hear that because that will go into weighing the needs of the pedestrians, the needs of the bicyclists, and the needs of, of the drivers. So at this point, this is, is, is what the master plan recommended, but it doesn't say that this has to be the end result. I think the, the end result is we want to narrow the street as a whole and widen the sidewalks, and exactly how the lanes are configured is going to be something that is, is studied more. This will just be what is, is put out as the first option, but there are others, and there are other concepts that RAMY's team actually have developed that would have bike lanes. Go ahead.
I just want to, just add a little bit to this because you, kind of right from the beginning of this discussion, hit on the point that was probably the most contentious internal to our team about, really about how do we take, you know, we all were in agreement that, that wider sidewalks were critical, and to get them now, rather than wait as individual projects come in, so that we, we wanted to avoid a kind of a sawtooth of a project comes in and then the sidewalk's wider, and then there's no new project, and so it's narrower again, and then it gets wider, and then it gets, we wanted to avoid that situation. And on, on this side of the street, we can actually do that because the city controls just about all of it here. And so, and, and, you know, on both sides with the right-of-way. So we, we had that possibility, but we went back and forth on how do we, how do we create a safe space for bikes within the limited right-of-way? And I can't tell you how many different sections we drew with that. So, you know, I would say it is something that I think we all think we need to continue thinking about doing. This is where we landed right now, but to echo what Peter said, it's not that we didn't think about it, and it's not that this is the final plan. And I think, I think, you know, the, the point is we should still continue to think about that and figure out what the best way is.
Okay, I have one final question. Ms. Malhorta referred to the current Civic Arts Plaza parking and the congestion, and I've heard people talk about they won't park there because getting out takes so long. Is there a possibility of creating an extra exit onto this new cul-de-sac that you were talking about implementing?
Actually, I don't believe there's a possibility of creating another exit from the current garage because of the topography over on the west end of the garage. We actually looked at potentially doing that, but it could be done probably, but it would be cost prohibitive. So instead, what can happen is that there would be a connection through the new parking garage that was shown on the, on the drawing, and it's on the map there, which runs between the new street and Dallas Drive. There could be essentially a cut through between Dallas Drive to that new street, and then you could go out to Thousand Oaks Boulevard or through Zuniga Ridge out further west.
Yeah, and along those lines, there's, there's been, you know, internal brainstorming of if, if, if there is a major event at the theater, and maybe there is entertainment in the West Side property, there, there may be a, it may be necessary to develop a valet service or other type of methods that actually do allow people to come in, not just on Dallas, but on both streets, drop their car off, have it parked, go on to where, whatever activity they're going to, and, and exit in the same manner. The, the idea of giving as many options in and out was looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for your presentation. I just wanted to start with a procedural question for the city attorney. We're making a recommendation on this matter to the city council. Will the notes and discussion here today be conveyed to council in making this recommendation, whether the recommendation is in fact made or not? I just want to make sure that somehow this discussion and record gets conveyed to them either through the next staff report or something, because I think we have a lot of good comments so far that should be considered.
Well, ultimately, I think it's going to be based on what your recommendation is going to be. The staff report indicates you have basically three options. One of them is to make a recommendation to support the master plan as provided, to do it with or without changes, or make a recommendation that the plan not be endorsed. Certainly, I think we've done it in the past where staff has taken key components or comments from planning commissioners and put that into the report, and if you ask for that, it's certainly something we can do. I think based on the conversation we've already had tonight, the discussion, we're going to be making a note about the bike lanes and that issue, obviously as something that's going to be continued to be reviewed, and that could certainly be made a statement in a staff report to city council.
Would that staff report have to be requested, or would it just be all implemented together to council?
Well, I think if we have some key aspects that we can clarify, or at least is, have been articulated that is clear to staff, obviously, as I just said, the bike lanes is going to be one that's a key element that has been discussed. If there are many of those, then we can certainly make sure that we have a list that we can provide.
And if I can add, add on, it would be very helpful for the Commissioners to comment on whether they also agree with the comments made of another commissioner, because, because if it's, there's, there's comments made that all of the present, all the Commissioners who are present agree with, will have a certain weight versus comments made by an individual, but there's, it's not clear that it's just that individual who, who has that opinion or it's shared amongst, amongst the others.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure we're giving you what you need and city council's getting that direction and input as well. So I wanted just to jump to, maybe it's a dumb question, we'll start with something simple. You have your pyramid. I didn't see any concept of live in your downtown. That pyramid, you had retail, you had restaurants, and you had cafes and bars, you had event space. Are you just, this is really just more on the commercial end that you're, you were focusing on with regard to this, because certainly, in my mind, what makes it downtown is having a live element to it also. Because certainly, in my mind, what makes a downtown is having a live element to it also.
Great, great question. So I guess two pieces to that. So one is that the downtown, as we're looking at it now, is, you know, think of it as sort of the civic commercial core. You know, certainly you could try and cram as much residential as you could possibly fit here. We didn't think that was a good idea, that the specific plan along Thousand Oaks Boulevard allows for for it. And, you know, I think we, the way we thought about it is it's sort of this is the 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 citywide destination. And so this is the place that everyone meets and the live is actually in the whole community and the area immediately around. And so there is residential right around that would feed into it. But again, this is the sort of the civic, the civic and cultural meeting space for the entire city.
Okay, I just wanted to get a sense because we have the daily group, the Lupe's project, and then the daily group, right? Proposed daily group project basically across the street from the lakes.
And and if I could just also add in, Matt mentioned earlier in the presentation that the area in in the leg blue, that's governed by this, by the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, which already allows housing to a certain extent. So it's not that it, in analyzing it, it was already viewed that the specific plan allows housing there. So it, the the four main items are are basically about what the city can do with our properties. And since housing is allowed elsewhere on the Boulevard, it wasn't viewed as necessarily essential that we put it on any of of, for example, on the West Side property.
Sure, and what I guess what ultimately I was trying to get at is I want to make sure that in considering, in developing the city aspects, the city on property here and considering what we can do with it. We're keeping a 30,000 foot perspective and realizing that there is retail around there. And we're figuring out ways that the SB 20 can work together with this and the the theater specific plan. All of them need to work together to make a core and a cohesive downtown. And I just don't want us to go off in its own little bubble and, you know, work on this. While you have SB 20 and you have all these different elements playing into it. It needs to be cohesive and needs to work together. So I guess that's my ultimate point there. Just for fair consideration on keeping that 30,000 foot perspective. Because you're going to have, you have development going up up and down the Boulevard. You have a brewery brewery project that's not even anywhere close to downtown, but that should be considered. Which kind of brings me to my my next set of questions is can you just elaborate a little bit further on this additional need for parking? Because really, in talking to a lot of businesses around the core and businesses around Thousand Oaks is they're not having, and kind of the direction of SB 20 is to have this livable, walkable downtown. And my only fear is if we're really focused on parking, we're missing the fact that millennials, and I'm just going to be the one speaking here on this, but millennials by their nature and studies have shown this and I'm sure Mr. Ramey is very aware of it. They're not using utilizing cars, they're not owning cars, they're owning utilizing public transportation, they're utilizing Uber, they're utilizing Lyft and other elements to it. So what, why so much parking? Because my only fear really is, and again, talking to these business owners, is they want people in front of their stores. They want people walking by their stores. And this Park Once concept, while I understand its point in the West Side and Santa Monica, for instance. My only fear is we're going to have all this additional space, but you have the millennial element working against you. And you have really the density bonus element to a lot of the housing also kind of working against you. Where Sacramento's telling us in a lot of different ways, don't focus on cars, focus on everything else. So I guess if you could just elaborate a little bit more on the parking and why we need additional parking, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Just just first a quick comment on Sacramento. If we had a robust transit system and a street network and higher density residential, then then it it might be possible to operate in Thousand Oaks without a car. Right now, the way it's laid out, because it of the area in which it was built, it's a little harder. Now, that doesn't mean that the mixed use projects that will start to happen on the Boulevard as 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 the site at Lupe's is is being built right now, won't start to change that. But part of the goal of the of the the core was to be a place that attracts people, not just people who live nearby, but to be a regional destination for arts and culture and events. And if you're the more regional destination, for a period of time, cars are still going to be in the in the mix. Also, because of, if if the city is able to work out Park Once locations, that could mean that some of the private properties don't have to provide as much retail parking spaces on their property. That means instead of them associating a certain percentage of their property for for pavement and cars, they could buy into a parking district, pay for some of the spaces, take care of it that way. That gives them more opportunity to to put more store store area on their property, which we think could be a strong incentive for some of these existing properties to possibly look at redevelopment. Having said that, the points you you raised long term do look like they are right on that 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 those of of my generation are going to still be embracing their cars. And the younger generations may not as 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 much, particularly in environments that allow them to do everything they need without the car. The the idea is not to build more parking than we need, because parking structures are very costly and every space you build is is a tremendous investment. And that was looked at, that we don't want to build more parking than might be needed. So the exact number of spaces that will be provided in various locations isn't isn't determined yet. It will be based on some of the changing parking ratios that that are starting to be used. Which which leads to one of Ramey's recommendations for the specific plans is relook at those parking ratios with respect to the fact that there there are the Ubers of the world and there are people less interested in cars and more likely to turn to other modes. So that's being looked at, and I think, Matt, do you have other things to add? So it's it's being looked at, but but the conclusion is we think there is still going to be need for more parking for the Park Once concept. And we think it's still relevant, at least in in the foreseeable future with the way Thousand Oaks is laid out.
Well, my only concern with that is that in a lot of aspects, that really looks at the now. And this really should be, in my mind, planning a little bit more for the future. You know, and I'll certainly go on record as saying I echo Commissioner McMahon's comments regarding the the bike lanes. You know, not worth reiterating, but I I echo everything that she said. There needs to be a an outreach to the to the bat as well as the biking community overall. I think that goes with creating that public space downtown, creating that event area. Because I would certainly, if I lived directly near there, I'd be happy to take my family along Thousand Oaks Boulevard on a bike. But I'm not going to do it. I mean, like she said, I'm not going to do it if if the lanes aren't, if there's not a safe way to get there. Next, I think, and I certainly want to applaud, you know, we've had projects before us. I mean, Vince Daly and his Lupe's project, he did have a dedicated Uber and Lyft parking. I think, you know, again, echoing Commissioner McMahon, we need to focus on implementing, seeing how new technology can help us deal with traffic. Because I think the Community Attitude Survey, year after year, has traffic being the number one issue and the number one concern. And whether it actually is, if you look at the numbers, is up for debate. But if the perception's there that there's bad traffic on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, really, no matter how many parking spaces you build or parking lots you build, people aren't going to show up because they don't want to deal with the traffic and the snare of traffic. And I think when you implement residential housing along with SB 20, I think you're only going to add to traffic unless you be proactive in the way you implement forward thinking transportation measures, bike share, zip cars, Uber and Lyft parking and drop off. So I certainly would like to see a little bit more of that. I mean, it creates that outreach and it fulfills that vision of council to reach out to millennials. And I know it would fulfill the vision of certain stakeholders along the Boulevard. Or people that are interested in being stakeholders along the Boulevard, CLU, the 805 Startups Group, if you're looking for an incubator space, I know that was mentioned. They're going to be attracted, but they have to be attracted with forward thinking concepts. And I just really want to make sure we don't get trapped in building to solve the now. Because I know the process that we have to go through to go and fix it in the future. And it's onerous and it's going to take years to actually get done. And I think also in talking to some of these property owners along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, they're very frustrated because they are looking to get stuff done and they don't want really much more talking. They want doing, they want implementation. I realize this is what you're doing, so I applaud you for that. But I don't want us fixing the now and then when we have another, when we have traffic problems or other issues in the future, having to go back and fix that too. I'd rather be proactive, see how we can mitigate traffic, mitigate issues forward versus in the reverse. Because I think we get caught up too much in having to go back and fix things when we can, really, if we're making a plan, plan for the future. That being said, that is all my notes, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pletcher. I too have a few comments and questions. And and just to reiterate what Mr. He here said. We have the three options, either to endorse as it is, endorse with changes, or not endorse. And from what I'm hearing, whether it be parking or bicycle, maybe there's some suggested changes. So as was suggested by Mr. Gilly, let's make sure that those are identified as as a change that we'd like to move forward. And if there's, you know, two or more of us are supporting that, to to make sure that's that's voice. So if you have some other changes or things, let's make sure we get those pushed forward. I do appreciate the fact that this is a vision. I realize that it's that it's not a final plan, that this is a a umbrella to kind of move us forward a little bit. And I noticed in the report, it was indicating that the the text is more critical than the images than the graphics that we see. And I think, generally speaking, I would I would concur that that the text has identified some of the key issues. And where we end up remains to be seen, but I think as long as what we know what the issues are, I think we're at least we've we've got the vision pointed in the right direction. One of the things that I that I did kind of come away with is I read through the report twice. I read through the entire master plan twice, marking it up as I went through. And I got this idea from the the vision of the changing of the plaza frontage and the expanded programming. I had this mental image of Universal CityWalk or LA Live. And I thought, I'm not quite sure that's where we want to go. That maybe it's amenable to some things like that, but it's not quite what I had in mind when I'm thinking of a downtown core. I mean, is this an entertainment venue or is it a downtown core? And it seems to me like a lot of what's being proposed really leans more towards that type of entertainment venue. And you're talking about increasing program, I thought, I I'm not quite sure I would support that. I I think more, it needs to be focusing more on what the downtown, what the purpose of a downtown core is. And then if entertainment is a part of that, that's reasonable. But it's almost as if it's the focal point, and I think that needs to be scaled back a little bit and be a little bit more practical in how this area is going to be used. I mean, after all, as was pointed out in the report, Thousand Oaks Boulevard is our only east-west thoroughfare through the town in this area. So we can't just, you know, be shutting it down every weekend and having more entertainment. Periodically, I understand that, but I think it's just a matter of where that balance is and making sure that, yes, it will always be our main thoroughfare. We do need to retain those traffic lanes, we do need to provide walking and bicycling and everything else. But we just can't, you know, coordinate off and say, no, this weekend is just going to be for for entertainment. I think we need to make sure we have a a good balance there. I was also noticing as one of the items in reference to the specific Plan 20 impacts. And I'm partially quoting this. "Primary benefit of mixed use development is the commercial storefronts where activity can happen." And then furthermore, in the report or in the plan, I should say on page 18, references in specific pedestrian oriented ground floor uses. Again, I think that's really important because I I did hear in looking at our pyramid example, that retail is, you know, important, but not as important as other elements. And yet also I read that the mixed use components that bring commercial are essential to the success. So it's almost as if those are contradicting one another. So I would like to make sure that that's clearly stated, because to me, that's the value of mixed use. And I have seen this in international applications as well, where we have those types of scenarios where you have that ground floor, whether it's a mom and pop shop or it's a a little cafe or whatever happens to be. That's what brings the interest and the character to the community when you have that mixed use development. So I think we we do need to emphasize retail to the value of getting that pedestrian interaction in these areas. And it's not, well, residential is is a part of that, that's kind of what helps make that mixed use practical. Would it be possible to see that one graphic again where you had this display of about 15 or 20 responses? And who strongly agreed and strongly disagreed? Is that readily available to us? Yes, thank you. Along that same line, I was noticing the topic called residential residential in or near downtown. And I noticed, while it still has a fair percentage of favorable responses, of all those categories, it was the least responsive of a favorable and the most responsive and disagreeing. And yet that seems to be a key component of specific Plan 20. I'm going to throw this back on on our experts here. When you see something like that, what's your takeaway from it? Is there something that, is it is it statistically significant? Probably not. But is it a thermometer of the community's feelings and and is there a takeaway from that type of response?
Well, staff, staff's view is that with, you know, recent initiatives and discussions at council level about housing and such that there is, there is a heightened sensitivity about new residential development. And and we also noted that of all of all the other questions that were asked that gave that strongly agree over to strongly disagree options, this one was the only one not in the 60% range in in support. It's still 51%, so it is, it it's it's a majority, but it's 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 certainly the closest. It also has the largest neutral response. So people who don't really know whether it it is a good idea or not. The the specific plan in in its current state allows a certain amount of housing and and the master plan does not propose to change any of that. I think the most notable findings is of the master plan is of the four main things to do. The the frontage of 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 our site here, the treatment of Thousand Oaks Boulevard itself, the West Side property and the programming of events. None of those touch on adding housing. The market may propose adding housing on the Boulevard as part of mixed use projects. It may not. It 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 will depend on construction costs, property costs, a range of things. There's strong feedback for the other elements we're talking about. And so that staff, Ramey's team and the ad hoc committee took as a positive that the types of uses that, for example, are being looked at for the West Side property, we we maybe, we we are looking in the right direction, we're looking towards things that are that they that the community is more supportive of than if we put housing there, for example. It's certainly, so in general, we think there it's it's a it's a reflection of the sensitivity of housing right now. And it's, it may be a reflection of not a full understanding of all the trade offs that. That to get some of the storefronts we want with the cafes, with the retail, or with like an entertainment-type use, to get new retail structures built out towards the Boulevard, close to the sidewalk, where we can see that activity. It's, to pay for that, a private property owner needs the housing at this point. If the office market was hotter, they'd be asking for office. It isn't right now. Markets can change. So I think it's something we are looking at as kind of a reaffirmation for the internal decision not to put housing on the Westside property.
Thank you. And to kind of tie into that a little bit, Mr. Gilly, as you had mentioned, I think in response to Commissioner McMahon regarding the bicycle activity on T.O. Boulevard, and that our current city design doesn't really lend itself to that, because we are so scattered, we really are a suburban, spread-out design. And with lack of ability for a grid system for mass transit to really transport people back and across, makes it very difficult. And I think along with that, it kind of even ties into the parking issue, that there's a lot of people in the city that are not going to walk, or bike, or even Uber downtown, they're going to drive, if you wanted to get them down there. And that will happen for a while, until this next generation comes up and says, okay, we're taking a new mode of transportation. But as long as we have a lot of people who live multiple miles away from downtown, if they want to come downtown, they're going to drive. And which will continue to add to that congestion. And I can see where this is, you know, continuing to be a challenge, even if we get a lot more people bicycling, or a lot more people, you know, taking mass transit, whatever it happens to be, this is going to continue to be a challenge. And I think it does need to be kind of a transition in some ways. Yes, provide those opportunities for bicycling and parking and everything, but not to lock it in. That there has to be a phased approach almost as this evolves. How that phase is timed, I'll leave, again, leave that to the expert, but it seems like it's a, you know, a process that we have to go through. Another thing I wanted to kind of make note of is, on page 13, it refers to the downtown cores being the place to go. And kind of tagging on to what I was talking about before, it shouldn't be the only place to go. I think it is a place to go, it is recognized as the downtown core, and that is the hub of the city, so to speak. But it also needs to provide a connection between the other elements of T.O. Boulevard. And I know we're just focusing on the T.O., on the core right here. But I think some mention needs to be made, that it also needs to provide that connection to the rest of the Boulevard, including our other activity centers, whether it be the Oaks Mall, and the Jan's Mall on one end, or the Promenade at the other, where we have activity centers, that there's a connection and a coordination. That it's not, we have the downtown core, and then everything else just kind of falls away from the side, east and west there. So I think if we could maybe draw that out a little bit.
Can I, sorry to jump in-
Oh, yes, please, go ahead.
You know, I think, you know, we all agree with you, and I think, you know, it's, if it wasn't stated clearly, it should have been. I mean, this can't, this area can't operate in isolation. It won't be successful. And so the success of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and what happens, and thinking about connections from here to the other, the other areas along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and other destinations within the city, is really critical to do. We were focused on this potentially, we were a little bit too myopic in the writing of the report. But, yeah, I think we agree with, you know, that comment and that sentiment. And it relates to a lot of the other comments that have been made this evening as well, about how it's not just about this, you have to look outside as well, about the other, the retail uses, the residential uses, and how people are going to activate the space from outside. So, great comment.
No, I appreciate that. And I know for those of you who have this visionary approach, when you get out in front of the pack, a lot of people start throwing rocks about all the things they don't like about it and everything else. But I appreciate you at least getting out there and giving us something to talk about. So thank you. I want to make sure you appreciate that as well.
Bring on the comments.
Yeah. A couple of questions. On page 43 of the master plan, there is a reference under gateways that Zuniga Drive is a gateway. I'm just wondering, is that intentional? Because it seems like Herb's Road has been the defining point. I didn't know if that was thrown in there, or if that was accidental, if you could clarify?
It was conscious. The, just based on the street network and the properties on either side of the street, it seems to be more likely that the gateway element will be closer to Zuniga than Herb's. You know, we're talking, it'll still be in sight of Herb's, but it's probably, you know, with the gas station on one side, that we tend to think is going to stay there probably the longest of most of the uses on the Boulevard, because it's so small. It may not lend itself to having the entrance, the gateway signage element be there. So the idea is that that intersection is already being looked at to address the loop pace project that is coming forward. And so the natural location for a gateway element might be further to the east, closer to Zuniga. If we end up finding that there's a type of design that can work closer to Herb's, we probably would start to nudge it in that direction, because that is the original boundary we started with.
Okay. I just was curious, because I know that's not far one from the other. Yeah, a question for Mr. Ramey, you had talked about it just briefly, but I was reading the in-lu fee comment, and just wanted to maybe just expound a little bit on how that in-lu fee is envisioned at this point, and how that might work?
I can only talk about it briefly. So the idea is that instead of building parking, that each, instead of each project building parking on their site, and paying the astronomical amount to build parking, you know, $50,000 for a structured parking space, they pay a fee to an entity, whether it's the city, or whether it's some organization that runs the parking, in order to build and manage parking for the whole district.
Okay.
How much it is, how it's collected, when it's collected, no idea. But that's the concept.
I see.
And it's to get away, you know, it's essentially to address, you know, Mr. Fletcher's comments about parking and parking supply. And it's easier to manage parking and to reduce parking when you do it at sort of a district scale, rather than when you do it on an individual parcel scale. And it's also easier to build a lot of different, a much larger variety of uses, and have those uses come in and change if you have a centralized parking that you can pay into.
Okay, all right. And I know the recommendation was, don't get hung up on images, but I did notice in some of the wayfinding images, that as soon as you put a wayfinding sign up, it's going to be obsolete, because some business changes or relocates where it happens to be. So I just would consider if there's some way to do some of the LED types of displays, where they're changeable, I know they all have Wi-Fi systems now with a little computer in it, you can change them as you need it. I see, you see those in the malls all the time, they flash a directional sign once, and then you get an advertisement the next time. You know, I think that'll make it much more functional. The last thing was on, I know there's a couple of comments about kiosks and things like Is there an idea of having some of these like mobile carts hanging around some of these areas, or are these stationary kiosks for retail uses? Or is this just a vision at this point, and nothing is really ever concrete at this point?
Sure. So the idea of the kiosks is, they could be any or all of those things. The kiosk could be temporary, and brought in only when there are events, and there's the demand and the activity going on, where you would need those. So a coffee kiosk could happen in those times. It could, in our community meetings, we heard a lot about the desire for an information kiosk. The kiosks could also be, they could transform from being a kiosk to being carts, if there was a food cart festival, or a food truck festival. So they could take on a whole variety of shapes and sizes, and duration of the time they're allowed here.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, you, Mr. Chair, you began to kind of touch on just a one final thought I had. Throughout the document, there's a lot of discussion of signage, and maybe it's just a suggestion, we go back and we revisit the type of signage that can be used along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. In a retail concept, in a commercial concept, you have a lot of very similar signs, if you drive along the Boulevard. And again, this could be the way of kind of implementing the SB 20, as well as this new downtown core, but an exploration of what type of signs these retailers and restaurateurs can put up to the, you know, and we could put our size extent on there. But there are a lot of other different signs out there that draw people's eye to a particular location. And I just think it's worth possibly looking into, having a conversation on, possibly looking at an update too. I believe, if I remember right, a lot of that area is fairly old, a little bit outdated. I know we discussed it briefly in the First Amendment context, and that obviously wouldn't change, but to the extent we can look at it as the way and the different styling of signs, it may be an interesting element to consider in implementing the downtown. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon, anything else? If I could just maybe restate what I had here for, whether it's changes or emphasis, is, the first one I had was making sure that the Plaza frontage and expanded programming is not like an overwhelming intent of the downtown core, that it is complementary, rather than the focal point of that area. And then secondly was to elevate, I guess would be the best way, the value of having the commercial storefronts and the mixed-use development. It's stated in here, but I think just to make sure that that's elevated, that retail isn't a primary component. To me, the heart and soul of Thousand Oaks Boulevard is the small business operators that are up and down. There's a lot of them that have been here for 40, 50 years, four or five decades. You know, J.C., Plumbing, Carlsons, you name it, we've seen the last few years. But it is like the heart and soul of what T.O. Boulevard is all about. So I think we need to emphasize that, and to continue to plug in retail where we can for the small business element. So I think that needs to be a focus. So maybe even that portion can be emphasized, is not only is it retail, but it's small business, you know, and kind of support that group. And lastly was to emphasize, and I know Mr. Ramey said that the intent was to include that, that the downtown core is to complement what happens throughout the Boulevard, and provide that connectivity throughout the Boulevard, including from the far east to the far west side of that. And that it's, might be a hub, but isn't necessarily the only place where activities take place. And to kind of emphasize those. So those were the three things that I would like to move forward, as far as whether it be a change or an emphasis. Those are the three things I wanted to emphasize myself. Anything else? Mr. McMahon?
Excuse me, I agree with a lot of what you said, Chair. I also want to commend you on this, because I think, for the most part, it's wonderful, and I like so much of it. The one thing that I would encourage you to, and in fact, Commissioner Pletcher is so good at making motions, I'm going to let him make a motion, but perhaps add that we make sure that there are protected bikeways, either bike lanes, or bike paths, or something in this. And just add that to your motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pletcher?
It's a lot of pressure. You can, the only way you get better at making motions is if you make them yourself, so feel free.
But you're so good at it.
And if you could maybe restate your, whether you want to call it change, or whatever it happens to be regarding parking?
Certainly want to emphasize for staff, just working to make sure we're implementing a connection between this plan and SB 20 and the surrounding Boulevard, the attentive council there, and the great hopeful redevelopment and mixed-use we're seeing along there currently. Number two, reiterating what Commissioner, at least on my list, reiterating what Commissioner McMahon said on the bike lanes. But I think a greater, even additional focus, I guess, would be on other transportation methods and ways to get to the downtown core, bike share, or working with the Transportation Center, for instance, to figure out a way to get people from the Transportation Center over, or from different areas of the outer extremities of the Boulevard into the core. Could be a trolley, could be bike share, could be zip cars, could be Uber lift drop-offs, different ways that we may not necessarily need the parking to the extent that it's currently in the, in the plan. And then just, overall, just being forward-thinking, at least in my opinion, making sure we're really focused on looking to the future of what Thousand Oaks Boulevard can be, both for commercial, the future residential, and certainly the retail. Not necessarily fixing the problems of today, but looking forward and seeing what problems may arise tomorrow, and working to fix those before they surface, I think would be key, and among them would be the traffic issues. Those are my main points. I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I ask for a motion, I just wanted to, again, get back to staff. We tried to get everyone to rephrase some of the changes, comments. Any questions or clarifications that would help, as far as what the intent of the commission is at this point, or the commissioners, perhaps?
No, I think we have a good understanding of the comments made. Thank you.
Okay, so I think probably we're into the endorse with changes category, but would either of you care to make a motion at this point?
I guess it's on me. Happy to make a motion to recommend that the city council endorse with changes the downtown core master plan. And I think implementing the notes and discussion that we've had here tonight, from all three of us, I don't believe it's worth reiterating, we reiterated it right now, it's on the record, city staff has understood that we have, we all understand, we all know what the changes and discussion we've had tonight. So I make that motion. And just in doing so, I again want to thank city staff, as well as Ramey and Associates. I know this was not an easy task to do. Thousand Oaks is a city in midst of change, and to be given such a task, I know you guys are the experts, certainly, but I do appreciate all the hard work, and really what this document represents. It's certainly a valiant effort, and there's so much, and you did such a great job of reaching out to the community. And I think that's one of the more important points that we see time and time again on many of the applications that become before us, is that we are the first stop of the voice of the community, and we always appreciate when any applicant, city, or, you know, even Verizon Wireless or other applicants, reach out to the community and get input on what is important to everyone in the city. So I want to just thank you to that, and then reiterate, I'll just pass it actually back to Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon, any final comments?
Yes, I do agree. There was a lot that went into this, and I recognize that, and I appreciate all that you've done. And you have incorporated so many things I never thought of that are really great elements. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, and I, again, I want to just restate, thank you for putting things out there, at least for us to throw darts at, you know? If it weren't for you, we wouldn't even be moving forward. I know there's a lot of input that's been had, you're going to be getting more, and maybe we're just setting the stage for the first of many changes. And I suspect there will be changes as we go along, because this is a vision. It's not a plan per se, in that it's firm, but it's giving- It's not a plan per se, in that it's firm, but it's giving us a direction. And the City Council will certainly have many opportunities to weigh in on this, and I look forward to public comment as well, in many realms. Appreciate all of you leading us forward in this direction, and we'll be hearing from you, and you'll be hearing from us as we go along. Appreciate that. Okay, would the Secretary please prepare us for a vote? Okay, and just for the record, this is a recommendation to the City Council, it is not a public hearing, so there's no real appeal process, just strictly a recommendation to the City Council. So with that, we'll continue on to commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Any comments from the commission? Okay. Staff update? Mr. Parker, do you have any updates for us?
Yes. Looks like your next planning commission on June 4th will be canceled, and we'll follow up with you at a later time on June 18th, in terms of your next planning commission meeting. And while we're speaking on that, I'll just follow up on a couple of items that are going to council. The downtown master plan that you guys just took action on will be going to council on June 5th, and that will be followed up with the item that this body heard in April, which was the Silverado Assisted Living Facility on the 19th of June. And with that, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Heer, I don't want to leave you out if you have any staff comments.
No, not at all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, with that, since we won't be meeting on June 4th, we will be adjourning to 6:00 PM on June the 18th.
That is correct.
Very good. And good night, Thousand Oaks.